All right, let me call the meeting to order. Let me call the roll, please.
Mayor Breckus?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Here.
Councilmember Albritton?
Present.
Councilmember Hartman?
Here.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Here.
We have a quorum there.
Very good. If you could please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Mayor. On the LPA hearing, the first item, the LPA resolution for the power line ordinance, that was set by the council back in December for tonight's hearing. There has not been any action that has been taken on this by the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Board, and staff would like to have this item withdrawn at this time.
Do I have a motion to withdraw this item?
Absolutely, motion to withdraw.
Second. All right, any discussion on this? All right, if we can please call the roll on that.
Yeah, I'm hearing it too. Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Breckus?
Yes.
Yeah, Mayor, going further on item four. This item is ready for action, but unfortunately, the town planner had to go out of town today. So, we have it on the agenda tonight because we had set for that. We would like council to set it for time certain for the April 14th meeting.
Shall move.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, if they could just be read into the record and then the motion be made.
Yeah, thank you, Keith.
Not moved.
Motion dies for failure of a second.
This is the resolution of the local planning agency of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, making a recommendation that the town council adopt an amendment to the text of the Town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code to exclude certain surface water management areas from net plot area and provide for nonconformities providing for an effective date.
Motion table, date certain.
To April 14th, I believe.
April 14th, 2022.
Second.
All right, if we can please call the roll on the motion to table.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Breckus?
Yes. And then I believe we have minutes.
Mr. Mayor, just to follow up on item number three, is that, has that been sent to the comp plan?
I don't believe so. I believe the intention is, I don't think there was enough support behind it to really do anything with it, to be honest with you.
Fair enough.
It was sent to the comp board.
It was originally.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it wasn't resent.
Right.
All right, the approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Is there any additions or corrections from the public to the minutes? Seeing none, if you can please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Breckus?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Wonderful. Okay. I would like to call to the order, call to order the regular meeting of the town council. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Present.
Councilmember Hartman?
Here.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Here.
Mayor Breckus?
Here, if you'll join me in the pledge, please.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, we are very fortunate to have Representative Bartman here, Robin. Wonderful to have you here. And before you jump into it, I just want to say thank you so much. You have been doing a stellar job up there representing not only the ranches, which you do an amazing job of, but I know our complete area for a lot of bigger issues that affect us more. But just your dedication, the work, all you've done, so appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you, guys. I love representing Southwest Ranches. As a matter of fact, I loved attending your scholarship dance. Thank you to the lady who finally stopped bidding and let me win the bar membership. Whoever you are, I appreciate that. But I just truly love representing you. Just to give you a little legislative update, first, I'm going to start with the bad news. You worked so hard, and I did as well, for that local bill so that we could prohibit fireworks. When I met with Chair Toledo, who was the first committee stop, other cities had asked for the same thing because one city had had it the first year. And she decided that she opened up floodgates, and so she wasn't going to allow any of our bills to go through. And so, I spoke with your mayor. We're going to work on creating a statute that would apply to everyone, that would help communities like yours. And the good news is, I'm happy for her, she's running for Congress, so she will not be the chair of the first committee stop next session. So, we could try, if we could try to do it again. We could try it local, and then we can try a state statute, because we're not the only ones who want it.
Yeah.
A lot of communities want it. We have a lot of equestrian communities here in South Florida, in North Florida, and once Wellington got it, everyone was like, we're going to do this for our community and our animals. And so, I was very disappointed, but I'm hopeful now.
Awesome.
Okay, so I also want to thank the commission for coming up and attending my press conference for House Bill 523. That is legislation that I am very proud of because it affects all of South Florida. It's a bipartisan piece of legislation. Senator Anna Maria Rodriguez sponsored it in the Senate, and I've spoken about it before, but this is very important for the community to understand. We are part of the Central and Southern Flood Control District. So, from Lake Okeechobee down, we have a canal system, we have drains, we have gates that take care of all of the inland flooding. The majority of it goes out to 18 gates that are on the southeast coast. We do have some, like the C-11 Canal, that empty into the Everglades. Those gates in 2009, a study was done by the South Florida Water Management District, and they were six inches from failure, meaning that the sea level was going to rise above the gates and they weren't going to be able to open. Fast forward to 2022, some gates are now at three inches, some gates are at two inches. It doesn't have to be sea level rise, it could be where we have a full moon, where we have the tides moving. There are so many issues with those gates. And so, I felt like in Tallahassee, I was running around like Chicken Little, look, we have the 2035, and we know the gates aren't going to work. And I work with Dr. Jennifer Harado, who's at the county, who's the expert in all of this, and our voices were heard, and it passed unanimously through the House. And so, what that bill does is it creates an accountability system. Because once I was made aware of this, and we saw what happened with Tropical Storm Etta in our community, you know, my goal now is to protect my community. Well, these gates protect one-third of Florida's economy, protect 11 million residents, protect the Everglades, and protect our aquifer from saltwater intrusion. As a matter of fact, there's one pump at one of the gates that has to run almost 24 hours to prevent saltwater intrusion into the aquifer. This is not owned by Broward County, it's not even owned by the South Florida Water Management District, it's owned by the Army Corps of Engineers. So, what this does, it creates an accountability system up to the governor, to the Senate President, to the Speaker of the House, and to all the legislature. They need to identify the issues, the gaps, where the structures are, what are the funding gaps in getting it done, what are the timelines? Because, you know, I could win like the lottery and move to Australia one day, but you all still need to be protected. And once I talk about this, things get forgotten. So, what this does is it sets an accountability system so that everyone is aware. So, when the first gate goes, no one can turn around and say, well, I didn't know about it. No, you knew about it. It's, we're elected officials, when you find out something like this, you need to do something about it. I'm also really proud to say that I got $2 million in sprinkle to, keeping my fingers crossed, sprinkle dollars that will expedite the study. Because once the study is done, after they conclude the study, then it goes to the Army Corps of Engineers, then they have to design a plan, and then they have to fund the plan, which will be millions and millions of dollars. But we're, I'm just really excited that all of that happened, and I'm very grateful, and I just want to make sure everything gets signed and the sprinkle money's there, so it's wonderful. The second bill that I had passed, that's also ready for the governor's signature, is Managed Care Performance Plan, has to do with Medicaid dollars, health disparities. It's a great bill to make sure our tax dollars are spent effectively and efficiently. And the bill that is near and dear to my heart, that I pray every day for to get signed, is Mia's Law. So, I know a lot of your community, we all have kids that we took to college. We dropped them off, I dropped my daughter off at an apartment complex in University of Florida. I didn't ask who had her master key, I didn't ask how much notice she was going to get before they entered her apartment, I didn't ask if they did background checks on the employees. I didn't ask any of those questions. I dropped her off, took her to Target, decorated her apartment, and was so excited, like every other parent out there, like Mia's parents. Unfortunately, in September, Mia was murdered, allegedly, but by the maintenance man at Ardennes Villa. The maintenance man used the master key, he went at 2:00 to set up the apartment, he went back at 5:00. They're releasing more details now, it was on the news recently. He, they did not do a thorough background check of the gentleman, he had a master key, and we lost Mia. And this is not going to bring Mia back for her parents, but I can tell you, they want to protect other kids. They don't want any family to go through this again. And one day before my bill hit the floor, in Kissimmee, a grandmother was raped by a maintenance worker who was on probation for aggravated assault, who had a master key to everyone in that apartment complex. So, what this bill does, it ensures that anyone who has master keys, works in an apartment complex, they have to have a background check, number one. Number two, they have to give a resident 24-hour notice before they enter the apartment. And number three, they have to keep very detailed logs as to who has a key, when they have it, when they return it, so there's some system of accountability that will be enforced and checked by the state. So, that is Mia's Law, and those are the three bills that I was lucky enough that I sponsored and had passed this session. And I want to talk about your appropriations. Nelson is not here because he is in Tallahassee, meeting with the governor's office, trying to protect our appropriations. We got all of them last year except that guardrail. I don't understand the issue with the guardrail. I'll keep trying on, we didn't have the guardrail. But here are the appropriations we got for you. We got $479,306 for Southwest 63rd Street and Southwest 185th Way Drainage Improvement. We got $793,166 for Green Meadows Drainage Improvement, and we got $409,422 for Southwest 54th Place Drainage Extension to Ivanhoe Canal. So, we did great. Our pumps are here for the Broward Drainage District, hopefully they'll be up and running from last session. I know that last session, I got the money for the pump for Pembroke Pines, so that's going to impact your community. So, I'm very excited. Everybody, keep your fingers crossed. And then I just wanted to touch on a couple bills that you need to be aware of as a town. Number one, House Bill 105, you now have the ability to prohibit smoking in your parks. A lot of towns and municipalities did not have that before, so that's a new ordinance that you may choose to do something about. House Bill 620, I cannot say enough about, for the residents who are watching this town council, your city manager, always one phone call away. The minute we saw House Bill 620, I started freaking out because it basically preempts your town council from doing anything. It makes you obsolete. They worked with the League of Cities, they worked with the councils, it's supposed to be the bill that is the preemption of all preemptions. But it puts you at a disadvantage because anyone can challenge any ordinance at any time and sue you, and it stays the ordinance. So, they were able to work some provisions, which I'm sure your attorney will look into and make you aware of it, but it did pass. So, make sure you're aware of that. Also, you need to be aware of their new cybersecurity laws for you that require training and different things, so I'm sure, Russell, you're on that, but you're going to have to implement those. And you have some public records exemptions that you did not have before for cybersecurity. So, I am back now, I am so happy to be back in Southwest Ranches. I came back Saturday, I got dressed, I went to one event, and I ended my night at the scholarship barn dance, which Debbie and everyone who was involved, it was absolutely amazing. The food was great, I won my bar, it's the perfect evening. But I cannot say enough about this town. It has been my honor and privilege to represent you for the homeowners. I'm getting a lot of calls about insurance. We're working right now on putting together an insurance resource guide. If you, the number one call I'm getting is on being denied by citizens. If your house is above a certain threshold, you can be denied by citizens. And then you have to go to the open market, and that will probably be the case for a lot of homes in Southwest Ranches because of how expensive they are. So, we're going to put together a resource guide, we're going to email it out. If you're not on my email list, I'm going to give you my cellphone in a minute, just text me your email, I'll add you. I'll also put together the list for you to put in your newspaper. Okay, so for everyone who does not already have my number in Southwest Ranches, 954-668-3662. Again, 954-668-3662. I just, I still have a couple of random unemployment claims still out there, some business insurance issues that people are calling me for, just, you'd be surprised what I can help you with. I help somebody with a driver's license. Call my office, if I can help you, I will help you. If I can't, I will send you to someone who can. But don't be, hesitate to call me, invite me to any events you're having with your homeowners' association. And I cannot thank this town council, I know I have two commissions and one town coun, two town councils, Debbie, I got to remember. I cannot thank this town council and the mayor enough. You all are amazing. Thank you for, all of you, for standing with me and standing with South Florida to get these gates fixed. Just thank you for always being a resource and available. And the residents of Southwest Ranches are very lucky to have you. If you look at the appropriations and the work that you put in, and everything you do for the community, you guys are amazing. And I will see everyone at the farmer's market at 10:30. I'm very excited, I'm going to buy some more things after our garage sale. So, thank you all very much, and I love representing everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Before we let Robin go, was there any questions for her?
Actually, I did have a question for you, Robin. So, citizens used to be the insurer of last resort. If you couldn't get it on the private market, that was, you know, the catch-all for anybody who couldn't get it, were denied. So, what you just said is they can deny now, and then you have to go out to the private market?
Well-
Upside down, it seems.
They can deny you if your house is above a threshold, how much it's worth. They only insure up to a certain point.
I see.
At a dollar amount, which what we're working on is getting the information sheet for everybody.
Right.
I did not know that either, because I thought if you, if you didn't get an insurance, that's where you could go. But they only insure to a certain amount. Now, I'm hearing they may hold a special session for insurance. I don't know, honestly, this is such a big, it's not just a Florida problem, it's an everywhere problem. All the insurance companies in the United States and around the world, they have reinsurance companies that are their insurance companies. And there's, and that's the problem, so they're passing on their rates to our insurance companies. You have the roof fraud issue, which we supposedly, it was supposed to be fixed last legislative session, but they couldn't stop the advertising because of a First Amendment right. And there was a bill floating around, but I really don't know how I sell it to the people I represent, because the one bill they had, it would not be full replacement of your roof. So, if your roof was a certain number of years, you would have to pay an extra premium to have replacement of your roof. And that's something hard for people to swallow, especially when they're paying 30% to 40% more in rates, and then to tell them, well, you have a 15-year-old roof, so you're going to have to pay even more money. But that was one of the solutions that was floated around, nothing got done on it. So, we'll see if we go back for special session. I'm working with a consumer advocacy group because it's my job to represent the people. So, it's, there's no quick fix for this, and so, I'm hoping, I'm, I'm mixed feelings about a special session, because a special session, you're only there like a week. So, how are we going to fix the whole Florida insurance problem in one week, right? It has to be really thought out, it has to be, so we'll see what happens, but it's definitely that, and the affordable housing is, the rent, I have, it's crazy right now. People can't afford to live, I'm getting calls from senior citizens that their rent has gone up 50%, 60%, 70%. I have some other retirees who now, who own their homes, plan to retire in their homes, and because they own their home outright, they're foregoing insurance because they can't afford the insurance. So, there are big problems out there that we have to solve. So, and also, if anyone out there is in the insurance industry, or has any suggestions for me, call me. I do not the monopoly on ideas, because clearly, if there was an easy way to fix this, it would have happened already. So, I just want to get the best information to make the best decision, so.
Look forward to a call from Nancy, she's a subrogation specialist at homeowners insurance.
Oh, I'll take it.
She will give you 100 ideas, particularly on the roofing problem. It seems, per my wife, that a lot of people replace their roofs now with an insurance claim. You know, the roof is leaking, it should have been replaced, now they've got water damage, they make a claim to the insurance company and want a new roof.
That's, that's what the bill last session was supposed to fix.
Yeah.
And it didn't. But it's true, because I know people who are like, oh, I got a roof, and I'm like, yeah, but did you really deserve that roof? I have a 26-year-old roof, I had a leak, and I had a couple of roofers come out, and one said, well, we can go through your insurance company. I'm like, for what? There hasn't been a win event here like in 130 days. So, I'm biting the bullet and doing what I have to do to pay for my 26-year-old roof to be replaced, because that's what you should do. But there are plenty of people on my street who tried to take advantage, some got away with it, and then some have a leaky roof for two years because the insurance companies are fed up and are fighting it.
Yeah.
So, I would love to talk to her, that would really help me.
The other major area, water damage. Somebody has a leak under the sink, they want a new kitchen. Somebody has a leak in the bathroom-
I know.
-they want a new bathroom, so, you know, people are foregoing maintenance, and they're wondering why their insurance is going up.
Right, and then I hear stories that they take the money and don't fix it. Like, that's the other problem we'll take, which, I know, we do it to ourselves sometimes, right? But the storms, we don't.
Yeah.
And the flooding we have, the inland flooding to our homes, we don't do that. And it's just getting worse. It's not getting any better. I mean, from the, and don't forget, for people watching, it's not just the Florida insurance market, remember, all the reinsurances are for everyone, so the Australian wildfires, the freeze in Texas, the California wildfires, the tornadoes that just went through in New Orleans, that were, it's all the same. So, we just got to, I look forward to anyone who has some great ideas for me, I will take them in a second, I will meet you for coffee, I will buy you a cup of coffee. I like Dunkin' Donuts, I don't like Starbucks, that's where we're going. Okay. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Robin. Appreciate it. All right, if you all will indulge me just a little bit, I'd like to change things up. The Sikh Society is here, and they have, getting the word out on an event that's coming up, so I'd like to give them just a few minutes.
Thank you so much. Hi, town. There are 16 days left until the Sikh Youth Association holds their fourth annual Unity and Diversity 5K Run/Walk at Rolling Oaks Park on April 9th, 2022. We are incredibly thrilled and gaining a lot of momentum to make this a memorable 5K. We have signed 130 people, brought many sponsors, and people ready to donate for the cause. I would like to take this moment to reach out to the town's elected officials, council members, and residents for their support. It will be a fun-filled experience with, in which there will be food, music, games, and the opportunity to meet new people. Our goal is to further the betterment of society through a ground-up approach that promotes youth volunteerism and leadership. In doing so, we aim to identify, address, and raise awareness of social issues in our community. We endeavor to keep our moral values at the cornerstone of what we do to enhance team bonding and establish long-lasting community relations. On a separate note, the SYA is holding, is hosting an ice night at Jeremiah at the Pembroke Pines location from noon to 10:00 PM on April 6th. 20% of your order will be donated toward the 5K. When you order your ice cream, make sure to mention the Sikh Youth Association of South Florida or SYA to donate towards the cause. Again, make sure to mention the SYA or Sikh Youth Association when you order your ice cream. We are excited to partner with the town once again to pull off another amazing 5K. We would also like for the town to urge kids to participate and volunteer, in which they could receive service hours for their school. Flowers have also been printed and placed on the entry table. You can go to the Run sign-up website and search for Unity and Diversity, or go to the sikh youth association.org. We hope to have your support and participation. See you all on April 9th. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Are your flyers in the back for Jeremiah's?
Yep.
Awesome, so yeah, please support that, we appreciate all that you're doing.
Yep, thank you so much.
It's always an awesome event every year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number four, Marty. Take us away. Give us the good news, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's just one song, Marty.
Do we have enough money in the budget for some batteries, or what?
Test, test, okay, we're ready to go now. Well, good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Vice Mayor, council members, and well as all the residents of the Town of Southwest Ranches. For the record, my name is Marty Sherwood, your town financial administrator. Tonight, before I introduce three reps here tonight, from the, which were welcome tonight, because it's been two years-
If you can just turn the mic towards you, the direction a little bit, there you go, I think that'll be better.
The previous two years, we were on lockdown with COVID, so it's nice to have them in the audience here tonight. Tonight is our annual presentation of the Comprehensive Financial Report, and this is for the fiscal year ended 2021. And this 2021 annual report is the 15th annual consecutive report prepared since 2007, and the 16th overall since the town's inception. I believe this report continues to meet the Certificate of Achievement Award Program, and we are planning to submit this to the Government Finance Officers Association with the intent to receive another award. For tonight's presentation, I have the cover sheet up there, which is our beautiful Gary A. Polikoff Founder's Park, which showcases our park improvements. And this full report, which consists of 85 pages, is also provided within the agenda package. Additionally, it's been posted on, available on the website for all you out there on Comcast, it's available to you. And also, we will keep copies at the front desk for anyone that would like to review at a later date. I just have a few favorable financial highlights I'd like to point out tonight. First, of course, the Independent Auditor's Report, which Keith McCullough will elaborate more on later during their presentation, and this reflects an unmodified, also known as clean audit opinion. And this is the highest level of assurance, given that the town's financial statements were prepared in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles. The second favorable item, this is on page 65 of the annual report, or page 96 of 244 of your agenda package, is the total change, and this is what you're all interested, the total change in the unassigned fund balance, otherwise formerly known as reserves, for the general fund, and this increased $1,372,829. And that went from $4,153,41 to $5,525,870. And I'm happy to report that this all occurred even with the operational and financial impact from the effects of COVID-19 pandemic for a full fiscal year. Also, it is important to mention, the unassigned general fund fund balance represents 39% of total general fund expenditures. Therefore, the town continues to far exceed the minimum unassigned fund balance standard benchmark as recommended by the GFOA of up to 16.7%, or two months. We actually have close to five months of available working capital in case of an emergency. Throughout the year and for the year, I would like to congratulate and acknowledge all our town staff who are here tonight, who have once again finished the year in a conservative and fiscally responsible manner that created a net positive increase, in net position, in the total of the town's governmental funds in the amount of $2,019,400. the total of the town's governmental funds in the amount of $2,019,437. And that's on page 50 of our annual report or page 81 of 244 of your agenda package. This is the 11th year, consecutive year, 11th consecutive year of positive increase in the governmental fund balance. Finally, we are proud to report for the ninth straight fiscal year that the independent auditors report on internal controls and the management letter, in accordance with the rules of the Auditor General of the State of Florida, identified no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls. That's all from my presentation. Let me introduce to you tonight and welcome your next presenters from Keith McCullough. Keith McCullough, as you're aware, has been dedicated to the public sector for over 50 years by providing professional services to municipalities, special taxing districts, charter schools and other governmental entities. Tonight, we have Michael Barnett, CPA, who's our account manager and who most of you met during fieldwork while he was present. Then we have Stephen Emery, CPA, who's our engagement partner. And lastly, we have Israel Gomez, CPA, who is our audit firm partner. Combined, the three have nearly 50 years of public and governmental auditing and accounting experience, and they have also been speakers at various seminars pertaining to auditing and other financial reporting topics. Welcome, and you have the floor. Come on up, Israel. Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for the introduction, Mr. Sherwood. I wanted to echo a few things that were mentioned today during the presentation, but we wanted to do that from, from the auditor's perspective, so you all can hear it. Mr. Mayor, good evening. Vice Mayor, council members, residents and the entire town administration, thank you so much for the opportunity for allowing our firm of Keith McCullough and Company to provide auditing services for the town of Southwest Ranches for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2021. I want to mention some of the highlights. As Mr. Sherwood mentioned, the report is an unmodified opinion. That is the highest level of assurance that can be provided on an audit. It's a clean report overall. And the report has been issued early March, is when we print it. This is due by March 31st. So that will give you an idea on, on the records being where they need to be without an extension and to be able to present here tonight to all of you. As Mr. Sherwood mentioned, the report meets all of the requirements of the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. That's something that you all do voluntarily. It provides a report that is more transparent to the, to the residents, to all of you as well. It provides a statistical section, management discussion and analysis. It shows budgetary compliance. So there's a lot more reports than just presenting a basic financial statement. So it's something that you all do voluntarily. For September 30th, 2020, the certificate was received by the town. We're submitting this report as well this year. We go through an extensive list of all of the new pronouncement, what needs to be included in the report, and we feel very confident that the report will meet the requirements of the program. As I mentioned in the report, you will find demonstrating budgetary compliance. You will see the recommended levels for fund balance being met. You will also see that your debt met all of the debt service requirements, but also your covenant that are required to be calculated by the, by the debt holders. And most importantly, all of the pronouncements of the profession, which they keep coming like there's no tomorrow. Everything has been implemented to date. That's one of the things that I always joke with Mr. Sherwood. He's an early implementer. He, he's very, very committed to the profession and, and as an auditor, we, we do appreciate that. So that's something that we, we don't take for granted. We do appreciate that very, very much. We did mention about the compliance report. We do look at internal controls over financial reporting. We also look at compliance. And as Mr. Sherwood mentioned, there were no matters that we consider to be significant deficiencies nor material weaknesses. So it's a clean report overall. You will also see another report in accordance with the requirements of the Auditor General. And in that report, you will see that there were no current year or prior year findings to report. You will see also that the town is not in any financial emergency. And there also, there were no negative trends in the financial condition of the town. So it's also a clean report that we're submitting to the Auditor General. Couple of things I wanted to mention briefly that were required to do. All of the required standards that are applied into your report are in accordance with best practices. So everything has been implemented to date and is in accordance with best practices. As part of our audit, if there was any misstatements, any changes, anything that we adjust, we are to communicate that to the town council. And we had no journal entries during the performance of our audit. Everything was where they needed to be. Not only is it a clean report, but knowing that the reports that you receive throughout the year, we're not doing a lot of adjustments at the end, trying to put things where they belong. Everything was where it needed to be. And we encountered no difficulties in dealing with management or any of the staff. All of the departments were very helpful, very attentive to our requests. And like I mentioned earlier, being able to provide the report during COVID time without an extension is a testament to having the books up to speed throughout the year. I just wanted to thank the entire finance department, administration. Thank you, Mr. Burns. I mean, it's, 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 it's a group effort. As you all know, I mean, it's a lot to put together. Mr. Sherwood, I know he's retiring this year and I just wanted to, as an auditor, we, we've known him in other municipal clients here through South Florida, and he's very committed not only to, to town of Southwest Ranches, but also to our profession of accounting. That every year seems to get harder and harder. So we appreciate all your many years of services and, and you'll be missed. We'll probably see you at the GFOA conference, but it's been a pleasure working with you and your entire staff. And like I mentioned, we receive full cooperation from everyone and we're very glad to be able to be of service to you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. That's, it's always really appreciated to hear a report like that. It has not always been that way. And so it makes us appreciate even more the work that goes into that. That doesn't just happen. It happens because people are diligent in what they do. He's got a good team and the administration backs him up. We appreciate the time you all put into it to verify what we felt was true. It's always good to hear officially that it is true. So thank you for that. And, and Marty, thank you always for all that you've done. You, you've taken us on quite a journey and, and delivered us in very good shape. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. If, if anyone has any other questions, Israel's available for any questions at any time.
Yep.
I do need to please advise council to introduce and accept by motion the annual Comprehensive Financial Report as audited by our independent external auditors, Keith McCullough, for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2021, including the commissions to those, including the communications to those charged with governance letter dated March 4th, 2022. Need a motion for the floor.
What he said.
Yeah, yeah. We got a motion.
You got that, Deborah?
The second. And I think.
Second.
Is there any, any comments?
I have a couple.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you to the finance team because I, I can't remember how many years in a row now we've had clean opinions, which is, speaks world of the team, of you, Marty, as the leader. And thank you. I mean, I, I highlighted it again this year like I do every year, you know, the fact that we, we only had basic financial statements for the first six, seven years. And we're a little past that today. And it's your leadership that took us there. The other thing that I want to bring up at some point to the council is our very high unassigned fund balances. You know, we need fire trucks. We need all sorts of things. And to be maintaining five months' worth of oper, of capital, it seems we, we need to make a little better use of the money. We keep putting another million in the bank every year and we really, you know, there's, there's a number of things we can do with that. So that's for another discussion at another time. And we'll have to have another guy here to do the accounting for all that, Marty. We're going to miss you. You've had a great run here. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Any other comments?
I have nothing. Just thank you, Marty. That's it.
Very good. Thank you, Marty.
I have a list.
All right. Go for it.
Bob.
Go for it.
No, I'm not, I'm not going to bring the list out now.
Oh, a list of things to spend the money on.
This is like the 11th, 12th, 13th year, straight year of surplus budgets. You know, Marty, you're going out at the top of your game, you know, and I can congratulate you and as well as the town. It's, it's really good.
It is. All right. So we have a motion in a second. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion in a second. If we can please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonski?
Yes.
Mayor Barkus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you. Okay. The next item on our agenda is a discussion, kind of a review of the ARPA funds. And I'm missing my town administrator. There he is.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Mayor? Yeah, Mayor. We actually have another, yeah.
Oh, I apologize. No problem. All right. Good. Good, because our administrator was tied up, so. All right, let's, let's, the, the districting, Russell, if you can please.
Certainly, Mayor. Thank you. So tonight we have with us Scott Burton Rodriguez and his, his colleague, Taylor, Taylor Garcia. And they're going to go over the district, the different district boundary options for you. As you recall, previous meeting a month ago, we went over the, the methodology. And tonight, our consultants have a few different options for you to consider. So I'll just turn it over to Mr. Rodriguez and he can explain.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Town Council and City Staff. My name is Scott Burton Rodriguez with Empire Consultants. I am serving in the capacity as your redistricting consultant. Joining me today also will be Taylor Garcia. She's our, our redistricting associate. She'll be going over the plans. I'm going to just kind of give you a, a quick summary of the first meeting and your existing districts today. So if you look at the, the, the one slide regarding the overview, the objective here is to ensure that the district boundaries are equal in population, compact, contiguous and avoid splitting communities of interest. Now, the ideal population that we're trying to achieve here is for each district is 1,981. And that's based on the U.S. Census 2020. There is a, when you get the, when you get the 2020 census data, the, there's a redistricting committee up in, at the federal level and they produce what they call the Public Law 94171. That is your official census counts. And that's the data source used to tabulate your, your population equality. So based on that, 2020, there were 7,923 people. You divide that by four and that's 1,981. And just to educate those that are in the audience, typically, redistricting is designed for single-member districts. You're not that, right? You, you have, you have individual four districts, but the district members, as pointed out to me, is at large. So I do, I am aware of that, but you still want to, when you're representing a district, you want to try to maintain the population as equal as possible for Southwest Ranches. And that's what we're designing to do. So if we can go ahead into the next slide, okay, so what we're going to do here is show you that in the existing districts, we're trying to, to get to a plus or minus 5% of the ideal population. So the ideal population of a district would be 1,981 people. It goes above it, goes below it, as long as you're within that 5% margin, it's, it's defensible in court. So that's what we're, we're focusing on. So we came up with three plans because you're going to see in, in a minute, the existing district, in, in certain districts, don't either fall below the 5% threshold or above the 5% threshold. And then what we'll do is show you Plan 1, 2 and 3. Now, the strategy behind that is minimize impact of it, impact of any geographic change. We're not going to do any radical geographic boundary changes in pursuit of compactness and all that. We're going to try to retain your population, your geographic boundaries as possible. And so Plan 1 will be your minimal change. Plan 2 is a moderate change. Plan 3 is a little bit more of a change. So, but if you go into the existing district boundary configuration, as you see in those numbers, you'll see that in District 1, District 1 is over the 5% deviation of an ideal population. You have approximately 108 people over the ideal population of that 1,981. That's a 5.5% deviation, which isn't that bad. But I bring, I bring your attention to District 2. District 2 has a greater deviation where the population is under the ideal population by 133 people, thus giving it a negative 6.7% deviation. So the whole goal here was, let's see if we can balance that population. District 3 and District 4, they fell within the acceptable deviation range. So you'll see in, in Plan 1, we don't even touch those two districts because they were in acceptable range. And with that, I'm now going to turn the mic over to Taylor Garcia, who's going to go over the plans. You have the option. I won't let her talk about a little bit, but if you want to stop, like maybe do Plan 1, questions, or if you just want to run through the, all the plans and then questions, I'll defer to her, though.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Town Council, Administration. Okay, so like Scott said, there's a couple of ways we can do this. We can go through each plan, questions at the end after each plan, or we can run through all three plans and then ask all questions. How would you like to move forward, Mayor?
Let's, let's go through them. Why don't we do the, all three plans?
Yeah.
So we get a view of them all and then we'll ask our questions after that.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay, so Plan 1, just to make sure you guys understand the map, that blue outline, that's the existing, your current existing plan. So when you see the colors overlap into that dark blue line, that's because that shows your existing. And now Plan 1, it's different. Okay. So this plan, Plan O01A, has minimal modifications to the district's individual boundaries while attempting to balance the population equality per district. So the eastern portion of District 1 is reassigned to District 2. The southwest portion of District 2 is reassigned to District 1. Now District 3 and 4 will stay intact with this plan with their existing district boundary configurations. So District 1, it improves the population equality within the deviation less than negative 2.6%. So the existing boundaries of District 1's population deviation is 5.5%. That's the current. With this plan, negative 2.6. District 2, it improves population equality with a deviation of 1.3%. In your existing, it was at negative 6.5%. Now remember that great, no greater or less than that, that 5 point, that 5%. District 3, the population quality remains the same at that 3.4%. And District 4 also remains the same with a negative 2.2%. So as Scott mentioned, this one is the least impacted the town and is minimal change while balancing the population. Moving on to, oh, and this here, this slide, this chart here, that red line, the red dotted line is your mean, your mean population. So the blue bar is your existing and the green bar is with this plan. So you know, your goal is to kind of be at closest to that mean. And you can see with this plan, it does get you closer and a little bit more level, all the bars, all the districts closer to the mean. Plan O2A, again, looking at the map, just as a reminder, dark blue is the existing. So you can see where the changes are being made in Plan 2. So this plan, it continues to minimize the modifications to your existing boundaries, but still attempting to balance your population equality. A small portion of the southeastern section in District 1 is going to be reassigned to District 2. Small portion of the northeast portion of District 2 would be reassigned to District 3. And a small portion of southeast portion of District 3 would be reassigned to District 2. In this plan, District 4 would stay intact to the existing district boundary configuration. The District 1, it will improve the population equality with a deviation of 4.1% from the existing of 5.5. District 2, it improves the deviation with a negative District 2, it improves the deviation with a negative 3.7 from the existing negative 6.7. District 3, the population equality deviation would be 1.8% from the existing of 3.4. And District 4, like mentioned, the population equality remains the same, the same since the district boundaries were not changed as the deviation falls within that 5% with a deviation of negative 2.2%. So this plan, it improves the compactness with the population equality, still minimal changes as well as possible. And then here again, you can look at that bar graph. There is that mean line right there, that 1,981, that number that you'll see a lot. And that's what kind of shows that how close it is to that mean, the ideal population mean. Moving on to Plan 3. So interesting with this plan is the numbers that I just said are the same exact. Plan 2 and Plan 3 have the same exact population numbers. The percentages are all the same. Geographically, this plan is different, meaning the district, the geographical lines are different. If you put the two maps next to each other, they look different. But surprisingly, the numbers all are the same in both plans. But to note this population breakdown, it is identical, however, like I said, the geographic boundaries change. But it still minimizes minimal modifications while attempting to balance out your population equality per district. A small portion of southeast section of District 1 goes to District 2. Southeast portion of District 3 reassigned to District 2. Northeast portion of District 2 is reassigned to District 1. District 4 would stay intact to the existing district boundary configurations. And I don't, unless you guys need me to, but all of those percentage, the deviations are the same exact thing from Plan 2. Moving on to the bar graph again, very similar, very, pretty much identical to Plan 2 as the deviation percentages are the same. So from there, we can take questions, comments?
I do have a question. You're saying that the numbers between 2 and 3 are identical, and obviously, the paperwork will back that up.
Correct.
I puzzled over this for a couple of hours, trying to understand how in District 2, adding the southeast corner there and removing that from District 3, how the numbers wouldn't change in District 3? I don't see where, what's been added on to...
I'm sorry, may I just refer to what plan you're looking at?
I'm comparing 2 and 3.
So which one are you talking about, though?
So 3 has more green in the southeast corner of District 2, okay? And that area has been taken out of District 3.
Correct.
Okay? I'm not sure how the numbers can stay on par or equal across Plans 2 and 3. With that, because it looks by the map here that you've taken population from 3 and given it to 2, but the numbers don't go down.
Right.
That's the part I'm puzzling over.
So if, it's all in census blocks, and Scott, feel free to jump in anytime, but the census blocks.
To answer that, yeah, the census blocks. And the other thing is, we do use...
Yeah.
We utilize a redistricting tool that does the algorithm.
Gary just answered it.
Okay.
Nobody lives there. It's Coquina Plaza. It's commercial.
It's commercial. So you can see the gray, you see that large gray, kind of like inside that southeast. That's commercial, so...
Got it.
All those census blocks, if there's minimal population, it looks big, but there could be only two people.
Well, that's why District 1 looks huge.
Correct.
West of 207, there's about a, maybe a dozen, 15 houses out there, all the way to the Everglades. So, you know, a lot of that is completely uninhabited.
Yes, you guys have a lot of land, so the...
Yep, yep, yep. Good. Okay, thank you. That, I scratched my head and said, where are they getting the people from? So good.
Understandable. Thank you.
Why would you move it if there's no population there? Why would you take it from one district and put it in another if there is no population?
So the other criteria is compactness. So what we're trying to do is for the geographic boundaries to make it more compact is to improve the compactness as well. So that's why...
That doesn't look like it's compacting.
Yeah, define compactness.
Please, yes, yes.
Well, that's, you know, okay. So there, there's a formula, we use a Paulsberry-Popper formula for calculating your geographic area, where you factor in the perimeter, the area of your, and also, if you look at the configuration of your town, it's not a nice, complete, compact, right? So we have to factor that in. And so what the form, what this formula does, it looks at how to improve compactness in these regions. So in Plan 3, it was trying to, we were focusing on the population equality, but we're also trying to see how we can improve the compactness. Plan 2 has a better compactness rate, I will say that. But that's, but Plan 3 in certain areas has a better compactness as well, which we will provide that additional information once we kind of determine which direction you guys would like to go in, so...
Mr. Mayor, yes. Plan 1A seems very compact to me. I like the, I like the way it is now, but compacting, if you want to compact, you're not breaking things up. Everything's nice and squared off, other than a couple little joints into others. But 1A, you've given District 2 part of District 1 and squared it off. And then when you start into these others, it just seems like they're, hate to say gerrymandered, but it seems like they're poking into each other like, like they shouldn't, but...
So, based on that comment, I'm wondering if there, maybe we should just kind of... Well, let me back up a little bit. Are there any further questions, per se? I'd like to get a sense of where we are on these different proposals and see if there's a consensus on one. But before we, I ask that question, is there any other questions we have for... All right, seeing none. Okay, so Jim, I'm sensing, we're not taking a vote here yet, but I do want to get a consensus. Jim, I'm sensing that you are favoring proposal number one.
Well, leave it the way it is, or 1A, I don't understand, like Bob said, going into the plaza, taking that. I think that if you're going to square it up and make it straight, I'm not understanding why you just couldn't take 172nd Avenue, go straight up with it, and if there was too much into, one, just slide the boundary left and square things up. I mean, I'm not sure why I have that finger in District 3.
I hear you.
Right. I'm just not sure.
We can answer that.
All right.
Okay, go ahead.
And it's, it's a great, your perspective is spot on. So imagine when you get a puzzle, a puzzle with a thousand pieces in it, right? And every piece is unique and different. That's what we're dealing with, with census blocks. Ideally, we would love just by a city block to use those blocks. Unfortunately, the configuration of your U.S. Census blocks are very elongated. And that really, it limits our ability to make it really compact the way, as a geographer, I would want it to be compact. So the limitation here is the population that counts are, at the lowest level, are the census blocks. Now, what you could do, what, one of the things I recommended to the town is, in 2027, you can actually review your census blocks. I recommended this to the city of Deerfield Beach and Davie and Parkland. Davie and, Deerfield Beach and Parkland took that back in the previous one in, prior to 2020, where they changed their census blocks to be more aligned to their communities of interest. So something to consider. But right now, unfortunately, to your point, Councilmember, we're just limited by selecting these census blocks. And when you see a block that kind of has an irregular shape, it really, from a redistricting consultant, it frustrates me. But that's what I have to deal with, because I can't make an assumption on your population.
Got you. Does that make sense? Yeah. Just a comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, with one, I kind of took that out as one of my preferred plans because what's happening in, we're talking communities of interest now. Sliding the boundary of 2 to the west jumps way into country estates. And unfortunately, the way that line is drawn, it's kind of cutting side streets off.
Yeah.
So we tend to look at that area as country estates. Well, now it's kind of getting its boundary shifted west and, you know, nothing about my friend Gary down the way. I want to be as fair as possible, but I'm not all that comfortable with having 185th, 6th kind of coming down through here, 4th, 5th, 6th, and then all of a sudden, it jumps right into the landscape nurseries, which would all be in my district here. To me, that community of interest kind of goes from Griffin Road all the way to Sheridan Street. But now, if we have to carve out an area, again, it has to do with population, that's probably one of the least populated areas of the populated areas within District 1. So I am, I like the land, the designations on 2 and 3, perhaps 2 more than 3, so...
So your preference is 2?
2, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor, I have a real quick legal question to ask them that asked Gary, and I apologize because I was speaking, you couldn't hear, but this is what the question was. We know today that certain districts, particularly District 3, is adding a significant amount of new homes through housing community being built there. And I know that was not reported in the census, but it's coming online within a year, okay? And once those new homes come online, these numbers are going to be totally skewed in that district to exceed the 5% test. So just the general question that I had was, do you ever take into consideration when doing your district boundary, what is about to come online in a particular district that could directly impact that number? I did hear your response on 2027. But if the council knows now that a certain district is going to expand by a measurable margin, should they, when they're considering this district, you know, maybe alter the line to accommodate what they know is there or about to be there?
It's good to see you again. I've been through these redistricting before. I remember that now. So to answer some of these questions regarding the, that issue, that's why the deviation is there. So if you see a district that's negative 4, let's just say use that, and you know there's going to be growth in there, then that's probably a good, that's okay, you know, because you know that's going to grow in the future. Now, the answer you, I want to give you, you probably don't want to hear, but that's why a lot of cities and a lot of towns update their town charters to reflect a three-year instead of a 10-year. Because the problem with a town charter saying, we're going to just review it every 10 years, this puts you in that situation of, well, we know there's development is going to be occurring. It's not going to reflect that, and you won't have that assessment until 10 years later. But a lot of towns say, well, no, we're good with that. We can do every 10 years. So that's why there's that deviation acceptance of 5%, knowing that you may have growth or not growth as well. And I did have, last week, I did, for the last meeting, I did show the growth rates in those census blocks. And some of them, there was decline, and some of them, there was an increase.
The only reason I mention is because when you look at District 3, that's the only one that is, it's the highest district, you know, 3, 4, 3, whatever it is.
Right.
And with the addition of these new homes, it's going to be over 5. I just did the quick math. So that's the only reason I brought it up. I wanted to make sure the council knew that, because in the end, it's you all who are setting the boundaries.
And that's a good point. And the other thing that I need to rely on, on the council members, since you're representing the community, is what is your communities of interest, and you will have a better idea. You're the experts when it comes to the growth that's happening in your community. I'm kind of the numbers guy when it comes to the compactness and population.
Going back to Keith's question, though, can we forecast forward? I don't know what number he came up with, but, you know, we're putting 41 homes in there with 2 or 3. I don't know what the average would be, but is that a reasonable thing to do, or...
I can provide that to you, but if you go, if someone decides to challenge the redistricting map, the court will look at, what is your data source? Are you using the Public Law 94-171? Yes, Your Honor, we did, but we modified it because there's some changes and there was some, with some subjectivity in it. It just, it calls to question. That's all I'm sharing with you all, but...
I think, you know, I think it's a good point, a valid point, which would lay more weight on Plans 2 and 3, where District 3... Oh, no, wait a minute. So...
And if I'm the mayor...
Sorry, I just...
I'll just repeat the numbers for everybody. So in Plan 2, District 3, because that's what we're all speaking on, District 3 is at 1.8%. And in Plan 3, District 3 is also 1.8%.
Yeah, but in District 1...
In Plan 1?
1.
In Plan 1, District 3 is at 3.4%. So yes, you're closer to that 5%, but like Scott said, you guys know the community better than anybody. So if you know how many homes are going in...
Yeah. I think we have to stay, I don't, I don't think we can go outside the bounds.
Defensible.
And, yeah, I just don't, I don't think we should go there.
I think we...
You know, we can kind of push the limit.
We need to stay with what the studies do.
Yeah, I think so. I think so.
I think we're in safe ground on that.
But on the other hand, but on the other hand, if we, if we had one of these plans where District 3 was actually slightly below the median, you know, and grew into more of a median-type number, that would be even better. But I think it needs to be within the 5%.
That would anticipate it versus put it in...
Unfortunately, none of these fit that scenario. They're all have District 3 above the median already.
Above median already.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know if there's something...
We can, we can definitely look into it. And like, looking at the map, we're talking a west-to-east map, right? So we can only pull from left to right. We can't pull from, and unfortunately, on District 3, like Gary mentioned, there's nobody, there's no population down there. So on the east side, we can't give any more to District 4. So when we're pulling numbers, trying to get to what you're saying, it's hard, because we can only pull from certain directions. In District 1, we can't pull from left. We can only pull from right.
Yeah, but District 2 is the lowest, is a lower population.
Yes.
So shifting population from District 3 to District 2 should be something we can do.
Yes.
There should be room in District 2 to take, take room and allow for the growth in District 3.
Yes, it's something we can definitely look into. And again, we'll just have to review with the compactness and the population equality.
So, so doing that, Jim, I know, I know you're rightfully so, because you are, it's your, your area. I don't know if you have some thoughts on, if we were going to move a particular area from District 3 to District 2, do you have any input on that preference?
Yeah.
How that would work?
She said they can only move east to west or west to east or whatever with the boundaries. That does concern me a little bit. You do understand that I live very close to the boundary on the west side, you know, from 172nd over. You could very well take all that away and to give it to, to give it to District 2 there because the population offset on the east side of my district, so...
Great point. Great point. We don't, we don't want to turn this into a political discussion.
No, no, no.
No, 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 I'm supporting you 100% Jim.
Right.
Because if there's things, we've been there in the past.
Yes.
Okay, this town has been there in the past.
Right.
And we don't want to go back.
No.
So that's, that's no fun at all. So, so I think that's a valid point, and I appreciate you bringing it up.
Well, I understand that Circle S is going to bring the homes there. I have the area of Meadows, what is it, Meadows, down 172nd. What's the new development there? 16 homes that are there?
Oh, Magnolia, yeah.
Magnolia, that. So, yeah, the population is growing. I understand that, you know. But I would caution to watch where the boundaries go, if you don't mind.
Yeah. But I think that's the way to go, to be honest with you. And when I look at it, I think there needs to be some movement from District 3 to District 2.
Okay.
To balance it out.
So this is addressed to the, to the town clerk that what we could, you know, as part of our agreement in our proposal, that if we need to do a what-if scenario, you know, we're open for that type of meeting with the town council. So if there's, if you want, but these are the three plans that are laid out that were, are from our firm. And, you know, and if we can tweak it, we can look at it. But I think once you do a what-if scenario and you see those census blocks and you see what we're, the challenge, you'll see why we're down to three plans.
Here's a thought.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I understand census blocks. What was... Um, what, what was it you just said there? Are you saying that, that we're not going to be happy with what we're trying to do?
No, no, what, what I'm, what I'm sharing is that if, if there's a decision and you want to, like, to take a look, a deeper dive, in our contract, we, we are, we can meet with you individually, one-on-one, to go over, the three plans and tweak it if we need, to see if we can, to see if, can, can this census block, if it was assigned over here, how does it shift the population? Because we.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I think, I, I'm, I'm just, just my, I'm not saying this out without you have to do it. This is just my impression. I think Andy has a, has a great understanding of kind of who we are, where we live, you know, those kinds of things. And, and I assume he's, you know, he understands kind of the objective here. Um, I think that if you could work with Andy, you know, rather than getting too deep into this, and just, I, I think, I think, um, two and three are probably pretty good, pretty close. Just needs to be tweaked a little bit. That's, that's my impression. And, um, and I think, uh, you know, that, what do you got, what do you all think?
I like Plan One. It's clean, it's easy. One thing shifts.
We might need a deep dive.
I understand.
It's one little part shifts over to Bob and.
Mayor, I got another question, if I could. Speaking of the, look, if you look at two and three, the deviation change in one remains at 4.1, correct?
Correct.
Okay, uh, the deviation in three would be 1.89.
1.8%.
Yeah, 1.8. Now, it originally was over five, plus five. So you're taking all of it from three and giving it to four?
No.
So, no, I'm sorry, you're taking all from three and giving it to two. You're not taking anything from one. It's remaining at four. Why would you take just a tiny bit of the?
You're, you're discussing Plan Three, correct?
Three, two and three, the, two and three, both, uh, District One is 4.1.
Yes.
Okay, you haven't taken anything from them, but you've taken from three. You, you've, you've brought three from 5.5 plus down to 1.8. District One was at 5.5 to start with, it's only down to 4.1. So, am I right? The, the initial what it is now, it's 5.5? District One.
I, 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 on the screenplay on O, O two A, if you look at there, let's, let's go from District One. And that, so in District One, in that little corner there, so you know the blue's existing, right, and you see that lower, I would say the southeast corner there, that little green piece, there is, there's a population census block there. That's what gave us that number, so one is like 4.2 or 4, or 4.1. Um, and then also keep note that we also made a modification uh, with District One and District Two, where District Two loses a portion of its boundaries over to the, over to the west, and gives it over to District Three. Both in that, you know, I think that's southwest 166. Um, trying to get my bearings on these streets.
Yes.
So, over in that area, and then down in the south area in that section there too. So, um, yeah, I mean, and, and this is all generated through your redistricting tool that does the tabulations and calculations, and it's, it's the tool that's utilized by a lot of redistricting consultants. So, that, what we, what I was proposing to work with the town staff is that if they can get some insight on what you want to look at, I would work with the town council and see what-if scenarios, and they can then present those findings to you.
I'm okay with that. I'm, I'm, I'm staying out of this one, because it doesn't, you know, it's all right. But I, we do have a, a kind of a two and two, uh, uh, thought here, so. I would, you, you've heard the, you've heard the kind of the conversation. You're the experts. I think what I would do is, um, well, it's up to you all. If you, do you want to meet with them individually and, and have conversations? I don't, I mean. That's what I feel, to be honest with you. That's what I feel. Well, I'm not comfortable, no, I'm not comfortable keeping it the way it is because we're outside the 5%. And I think that, that's an issue. So it, yeah, unfortunately, it, it does need to be changed, I, I believe. But, um, you know, um, I do kind of feel like you're saying we're overthinking it a little bit. I just, uh, I'm just looking for.
A way to get.
Yeah.
Get to four, to count to four here. Now, Mayor, when you say outside the 5%, uh, you're talking about, uh, let's, let's look at 1A, uh, outside the 5%. District One is still outside the 5%?
No.
Because they're at negative?
No. No, in, in all three plans, they're all within 5%. They're not, they don't hit it right on. Some are positive, some are higher, some are lower.
Okay.
But they're all within 5% of that 1981.
High or low?
High or low.
Okay, okay, I, I thought it, okay. I thought it had to be on the positive side.
No.
Okay, high or low, okay.
Higher, lower.
I got it, okay.
Yeah, that's why I like Plan One.
Mayor, if I may?
Very similar to what we have now.
Yeah.
Mayor?
But it, it takes a chunk of the community of interest, country estates, out of country estates, district, out of my district, basically, pushes the boundary about three streets to the left.
I do think that it's, you know, I know we all know this, but sometimes we get, for all the right reasons, because we, we feel attached to the communities that we live in, so it's all the right reasons. I get that. But this is really a district for determining where somebody lives to run for office. We all, you all, do an amazing job of representing the entire town. Everybody up here, you know, and so, um, it's not so much a matter of, you know, representing your people, because we all represent everybody, and no matter where the district is, I think we're, you know, going to do that. It's, it's just a matter of where the candidates are chosen from. That's really what we're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, and any plan that we have, there's a chunk of country estates pulled into, pulled into my district.
Country estates boundaries, or I should say District One are just going to keep going west because there's so much land out there. And I don't mean on the other side of 27. But, uh, you know, all those big lots where the landscape nurseries are right now, they're not going to stay that way forever. We see it changing now.
They're going to be eventually home.
So.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, but I, my, looking at all three plans, there's, there's a chunk of country estates in District Two in any, any iteration that we have here. I'm just, I'm just thinking it's the, the least disruptive to me is Plan One. Am, am I married to that? No. I'm not, but it just seems simpler to me.
What is the, uh, the street number that the, uh, black line that you have in the document, uh, runs up and down? I'm having a hard time placing it on the map.
What plan are you looking at this?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm looking at Plan One.
Okay.
You've got the black line that shifts District Two to the west, uh, to the left of the blue lines that are there from the original. Looks like it's around 188 or so? Or is it going to the 190s?
Uh, may we, okay, thank you. I was going to ask if we could approach, but that's great. I think that's 166, but, um, Scott is going to.
166 is way to the east.
180, 188. Hold on, he's, he's gonna.
See, 185 is where the blue line is now, then the dog leg.
The dog leg, 185, 188.
That's 185, that's what I'm saying. It's going to, it's either 188 or 190.
That exists in what we have right here right now.
Mm-hmm, right.
Everything east of, uh, west, east of 186.
It's southwest 188th Avenue.
188th would be the dividing line?
It's southwest 188th Avenue.
188th, okay.
Do we move it to 190?
Mayor?
So, yeah.
What are we thinking, Bob?
I'm saying, can we move it?
It's an inside joke.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Inside.
Mayor?
I'm sorry, did somebody?
Yeah.
All right, I heard, I heard, I heard it, but I had no idea where it came from.
That's quite a.
Russell.
I think we have heard the, the concerns of council, and I, what I'd like to do is an opportunity to go back and work with the consultant, refine basically what we've heard tonight, and come up with some alternates of these plans, so you would see basically a Plan O one B, O two B, so on and so forth. So give us an opportunity to get together with the consultant. Come back, we'll send those to you, and then if, if need be, we can have, uh, individual meetings with the council before we bring this back.
Okay, all right. Sounds good. Are we okay with that?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you for your time. We'll keep in touch.
Appreciate the, uh, all the, all the information and, uh, working with us to get this worked out.
Of course, thank you.
I can only imagine what this is like in some cities.
It's like Tetris. It's a lot of fun.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
Thank you again. Have a great day.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
All right, we beat that one to death now.
Yeah, yeah, it was good. All right, now we're on the ARPA. Um, Andy. Uh, Bob stepped out for a minute, but you can maybe just do some.
I'll slowly, I'll slowly introduce the topic.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and it's actually a pleasure to have it on tonight's agenda, instead of at 11:00 PM or whenever we caught up to this at the last meeting. Uh, as you all know, the American Recovery Plan Act has funded the town to the tune of just shy of $4 million. Half of that has been received by the town, second half is, is pending. And there's obviously a list of projects and things that we can do with that funding. So what town staff has, has done is, is taken, looked at our capital improvement plan, looked at our other needs, looked at some other things that we have pending that we've tried to get funding for, and, and put a list together of priorities. And in rough numbers, we gave you probably almost $11 million, on, on which to spend that $4 million. And so what we're asking for tonight is to get some guidance from council on, on identifying some of those key properties for us to move forward with. This is, and certainly on the more expensive projects, is not an authorization for staff to run out and spend money. It is, uh, in some cases, we've given you our best estimates on, on what some of these costs will be. Uh, we tried to be certainly as fair and reasonable within the professional standards that we operate within. Uh, but if, you know, for one, for an example, if you say to us, yes, go ahead with that, the Southwest Meadows facility. You know, we'll, we'll then dig into it a little bit further. We'll know what the stabilized parking will cost. We'll know what the driveway will cost. We will know what the restroom construction will cost. Those things would be subject to going to the Parks Board for a site plan review. It would come back before the council. It would go through our procurement. So there's many, many, many steps that we would go through in the process to spend this money. But we can't do in-depth detail, dig down into $11 million worth of priorities, because we only have so much staff time and resources available. So we're, what we're looking for tonight is to get some consensus from the council, certainly on the, on the more expensive, uh, proposals that are on here, or propositions, I'll say, not really a proposal. But to get some idea where you want us to invest our time in digging into more information to bring back before you as part of that process. But I hope that helps. I know at the last, uh, the last meeting, we had this on the agenda, I'd given you all a memo that Emily had prepared, a little bit more background information on some of it, on some of, certainly the public works project. We tried to identify what things might be subject to other funding sources, whether that's cert tax funding potentially, whether it's state, uh, you know, working with our lobbyists and Representative Bartleman to obtain funding for some of the things on there. We have no other sources of funding. In, in my estimation, some of those things would probably be ripe for, for moving to the top of the list. But at the end of the day, that's a policy decision that's for the council to make. Uh, we can answer some of your questions on, on some of those projects. Again, I had given that memo out to you. I'm sure you have all had a chance to look at it. I do have it here, so I can refer to that. Town staff is certainly here to, to answer questions that you may have. Marty can talk about the financial implications as needed. Russell's worked very extensively on some of this as well, so, you know, I'll say to him, if questions come up for Russell, please just, you know, jump in and, and help me answer those, those questions as well. But what we're looking for tonight is, is really some general guidance from the council on, on what you as a, as a collective group see as our priorities going forward.
Great.
Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Andy. Appreciate it. Uh, just, uh, just as a, my thought as far as an introduction, just to kind of mirror some of what Andy said. I believe that this is kind of a, a unique opportunity that we have. This is not going to probably happen again. And, um, and my general feeling is that we, that the things that we should be prioritizing should be strategic, not, not short-term fixes, but more strategic type of investments and things that, um, will serve the town well for a long time to come.
I have an idea.
Yeah.
Why don't we see if we can get consensus, all five of us, on the top five?
Mm-hmm.
As a starting point.
Yep, that's where we're going. Yep, absolutely.
Everybody, let's, let's figure out who the, what the top five are, and then we see what we have left over. Uh, money-wise, because that's really what we're doing, is we're.
Yep.
We're trying to get the biggest bang for the buck.
Yep.
As we go along.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
In, in line with that, um, you know, my, my position, the first two are big priorities with me.
Okay, yep. So, um, I think that's a good suggestion. That's, that's kind of where I was going, but, you know, when you throw an idea, that's a volunteer to go first, I think.
Okay.
Awesome.
No problem.
Awesome.
Rock and roll here, Gary.
Thank you.
Um, my, my, uh, my top five, I've got so many different iterations of this. Number one, two, and three is the top three. The, the, uh, the EOC, design plans and purchase, and the, um, Green Meadows, uh, parking restroom facility.
Yep.
Then I would go to, um, the online permitting at Town Hall, and the Town Hall sa- yeah, safety improvements. Those would be my top five.
Okay. Okay.
Because that, those, and the reason I'm justifying the Town, the Town Hall ones, because that is, has a direct impact on the public, the kiosk, and the safety improvements. That's all.
Gotcha.
Can we talk about the, uh, safety improvements just for a minute?
Sure.
You know how to swing a hammer. Jim, if you've been to his house, he's moved every wall in it at least once. When I talked to Andy about this project, it's basically a door right by Keith's office there.
Right.
And if we need extra space, his office is big enough. You can always reduce that a little bit. But I think that's something that the three of us could probably knock out on a weekend, and maybe Steve and David can follow behind us with paint, because I can't fit my hand around a paintbrush. But I mean, I'm looking to knock that off the list. I mean, we can keep it on here for discussion's sake. But I, I think that we can probably not, we can't do the, uh, the badge swipe, you know, that sort of thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, you know, we've, we've been, I, I, I like the added, you know.
I'll do it if you guys don't want to help me.
But I.
Well, here's my problem. I'm 67 now.
Yeah.
Okay. It's, I don't have the same back that I had 20 years ago.
All right, so let's, let's get, let's, let's focus on, well, okay, let's focus on the priority. See if we can get the top five priorities, see where we are with that. What's, what's yours, Bob?
Uh, let me see, I'm in line with Gary on the first three. And then going on down, uh, I was also looking at the, uh, on the first, the stormwater projects, the Southwest Meadows Sanctuary Stormwater, and then the next one after it for, um, Frontier Trails.
Gotcha. Thanks. All right. David, Jim?
I'm in a mirror box, exactly.
Okay.
Steve, I, I, the first two, the first three, uh, I agree with. Town Hall Safety, uh, like I said, I, I'd like to see it done, whether we do it ourselves or whether we have it done. I heard, uh, Representative Bartleman speak about the $793,000 for the Green Meadows 164 Drainage Project or so. Uh, that's an appropriation that she's asked for and has received, so, that really doesn't need to, we, we've got that money, correct?
Well, not yet.
I mean, I, I mean.
We don't have that.
Subject, yeah.
Yeah, the governor can say no.
Right. But I, I mean, she pushed hard for that particular money to go to that particular project, so, you know, I'd like to see it go there if it could.
The governor's got the line item veto.
Yeah.
Don't count on it.
Yeah, we'll have to see how it goes out.
Yeah, don't count on it this year.
Yeah.
So what's, so I, at one, two, and three, what's, what would be after?
Yeah, what's this for? Yeah, what's this for?
The Town Safety Hall, if, if we either hire it out or do it ourselves.
Okay.
And, and then the Green Meadows Project.
Green Meadows.
And then the Green Meadows. Gotcha. Okay. Well, I think, I think that there's a clear, I'm, I'm also one, two, and three the same way. So I think we, we've got a great consensus on one, two, and three. You know, the, the, the deal with one, two, and three is that we also have, you know, chewed up the majority of the money. But I, I personally had the Dykes Road piping as the next one.
That's my number six.
Then your number six, yeah.
Yeah, my six.
Yeah. I'm just, and, and mostly, like I said, when I, I started this, it was more from the standpoint of just trying to get some of the strategic, that one has been an issue for, for so long. And, you know, I can go with any of the rest of them for number five.
Mayor.
There's not a lot of money left.
As you're considering other projects, I didn't hear this one mentioned, and, and there's one I really want to advocate for. And that's the request of the fiber to Town Hall.
Mm-hmm.
We have issues now where Comcast goes out frequently. Our backup provider is the speed of dial-up. If you all remember that modem noise.
Right.
Very, very slow. We had an incident just a couple of weeks ago. Comcast was out for two-plus hours. And given the, the information world we live in today, we're, we're virtually shut down when that happens. And we, we really need not only the increased speed, but the increased reliability to this building. So I just ask you all to consider that.
Yeah, and you know, I actually, so when I, when I went through this, I didn't, I did pick out the top five, but I went basically through the, the money that was available based on the quotes. And, and I picked out the ones that I felt were most important, that basically spent 95% of the money. And, and that did include everything, you know, everything listed through the online permitting and services, the kiosk, and, and then, then one more, the Southwest 205 Avenue. But, but basically, it's those, those top ones, I think, are all ones that, that we can get to. But if we decide to do something, the Stormwater Drainage and the Sanctuary, or the Frontier Trails, those are both very large numbers. I think the Frontier Trails is just, I would love to see it happen, but the number is so big, 2 million, that I just think.
That's half of it right there.
It's half of it gone. Yeah, exactly.
So the top three would be suffer.
Yeah, so I, I don't, I don't, I think it's, certainly, I think it's a worthy project. That's why it's on here. It's a worthy project. But to me, the number is too high. It takes away from too many other worthy projects to, to go for.
One thing I looked at, if I may, Mayor, is I, I took the top eight lines. Yeah, I discounted the license plate reader, the 30,000 for that, because we do have that in, in the recovery fund.
Yep, right.
So we, I, I don't think we need to use that money for that. We already have it. We came, I came up with 3,129.
Right.
To cover that, that let gave, that, we have a remaining 293, 293,000. That we could move somewhere in here and augment one of the larger projects, or the 205, or the 185th, and then put more money into that into the next budget, because we are in budget season.
Right, or, and, and that's exactly where I was going as well. You know, to me, I think it's good. Like I said, I left some money left over because these are, these are rough numbers. I don't know when these estimates came up, but if they're more than a year ago, you know, inflation has been crazy. So these numbers are, are going to be higher. And so I don't think we should, I think we should leave, and Gary, the way you did it, I think makes a lot of sense. Just leave that, that 200-plus thousand for cost overruns. And if there's, and if there's leftover, then it goes into something we can use.
Yeah, then we can do it. Because a lot of this stuff, you know, the bottom half, we're, we're trying alternate sources.
Yeah.
To get at.
That's right.
You know, so, and we know we're not going to get it from the other, the top half. So I, I'd rather see all the, all the funds dedicated to that.
But I have a question about the top half. I mean, a fiber project for 51 grand and a, and the safety improvements, seems like we can fund out of general funds. I mean, we've got excess reserves considerably.
We, we can, and, and I, I, you know, I don't, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying. I, I'll just say that, that project's been sitting around for a while, and every time budget comes around, it never makes it. So this is an opportunity for it to make it. You know what I mean? Because budget, we're, we're trying to obviously keep the mileage rate as low as it can.
Keep the mileage down.
Yeah, yeah, so I think this is an opportunity to knock, to get it done.
I think we've been a little too aggressive if we keep saving a million bucks every year in our budget.
I, I don't disagree.
I mean, we're not impacting people, we're not raising taxes when we're saving a million dollars every year.
We should be collecting the funds to spend it, not to.
Right, I, I don't believe in.
Yeah, but we've got, we've got fire, and we've got solid waste coming up.
I'm aware of all that, but we still have other resources that we have in reserves. You know, as you were mentioning, the, the money that we're using for the one reader, the license plate reader. I, I really want to see these. I mean, as an IT guy, you as well, you understand the benefit of having fiber. We've got two paths now. But I'm just wondering if there aren't other, other sources on those two. And you're right, I mean, we're way over.
Yeah.
But I don't support those. I wasn't thinking of those.
But here's the really, here's the really good part. We could, we could fund the, the top seven.
Yep.
Have the leftover money, and then revisit other projects.
Yeah.
Because the money's not going anywhere.
If, if the numbers come in as they're supposed to.
Right.
Then we'll have funds we can go back and look again.
And we can have, we can have another meeting.
Yeah.
Doing the same thing. We don't have to spend it all today, is what I'm driving at.
Okay. I, I, so if we, if we take that, that top section there, I think there's eight of them there. We drop out the.
Camera.
The license plate readers. Do we, do we have consensus there to give administration the go-ahead that we want to pursue those? Bearing in mind that we're not, we're not approving these projects. What we're doing is we're directing administration to investigate, to start working towards this, and it'll come back to us in, in, in a budget or as a specific approval.
We're really protesting that we're.
I'd say, that's a big yes for me.
Yeah, I, I would agree to that, as long as it's, we're not setting in stone that these are the projects that we are.
No, no, it's going to come back again.
I'd support.
And pulling out the, the license plate reader gives us 185,000 in cushion anyway.
Yeah. Well, license plate reader is.
30,000.
30,000, yeah.
Right.
Yes, pulling that out.
Jim, are you, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right. All right, I will open up to the, the public if we have some public comment.
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. Looking at this list, I'd like to know why, on the Emergency Operations Center land purchase, you want to purchase it twice, because you've already purchased it once. When we did the Town Hall Fire Station and Emergency Center on five acres, which is the one that is on wheels that we moved around, and is now sitting where the carnival was and the other event, that is a land designated for the Emergency Operations Center. You've already purchased it. Why do you want us to purchase it twice? I'd like all of you to give me the explanation. Why must we buy it twice when we already own it? Number two, the Emergency Operations Center design plans. We already have the layout for it. That was paid for already. It's part of the fire station, the emergency center, with the giant room in it for meetings. That's all been laid out. The only thing that has to be done is the blueprints. Why is that going to cost a million dollars? What is the insanity of a million-dollar set of plans for a one-story building? Is someone going to make some profit on this that we know about? Sounds like we're going back to 2002 on this. Police radios? It's already budgeted and paid for. What are you trying to do, stuff the money back into the account? So, we'll go about the others, the kiosk. I thought last year you approved that purchase. You trying to stuff the money back into the general fund? Uh, I see you shaking your head. What are you, are you going to buy a different kiosk?
When you get done, I'll answer your question.
Town Hall Safety Improvements, 25,000. What are they? Southwest Meadows Sanctuary, roadway, parking, and restroom facilities. What's the breakdown on those? One, two, and three, what's the breakdown? What's a restroom cost? I know how much it costs out at Fishing Hole Park, which we have renamed. I know how much that was. What's the parking going to cost? What's the roadway in there going to cost? 1,303,000? I don't think so. So let's, I think what people are doing is grabbing numbers out of the air. They're not realistic. And I really would like to know why, $750,000, we have to buy something a second time? And the Operation Center Design Plans for a million dollars? That's ludicrous. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. Any other public comment? Seeing none. Andy, I'll ask you to address some of that, but before you do, I wanted to say a couple of things. As far as the, the land itself, that, that land was, as, as I'm sure you're aware, Noel, that whole area there was, was purchased with grant funding, except for the five acres, which the town purchased separately, so that we would have the ability to do something with it other than open space, because it's a key area here. To your point, part of that was potentially a, an Emergency Operations Center. It was also looked at, I was not in favor of it, but it was also looked at as like a retail center. It was looked at as a number of things. Now we're finding that its proper use is so that we can do town events on it. And I'm thrilled that we can use it for that, so I think we were very fortunate to get that. The bottom line is it's the wrong place for a fire station. Clearly, it's in the wrong place. And what we need is, is a location that's further out west, where it will reduce the life safety issues for the people living out to the furthest west of our town. And that's the whole purpose of this. This is, this is critical for the life safety of those individuals that live west of, of about right where you are at, 199. And so that's what that's about. As far as the design plans, things like that, that, these numbers here, this is not a, as we've said many times this evening, this is not the authorization to spend this money. This is a rough estimate that we want to be, if anything, high, not low, so that we don't, we don't cut ourselves short. Andy can speak to the work that has gone into preparing these numbers. But clearly, the idea was to, if we're going to err, let's err on the high side, because we don't want to come up short. When, when we, when the administration does more work and determines the actuals, these numbers will, will, will certainly change. May go up, may go down. We'll find out when the, when the work is done. Andy, can you speak to that a little bit?
Mayor, I think you laid it out very well. I, I agree with Mr. Hollingsworth. The numbers aren't accurate. They're the best numbers we have at the present time for us to go forward. And each project takes an inordinate amount of time to, to estimate, to run down, to be more accurate with. That's what we want to do. We just wanted to get a sense tonight of what the council's priorities were to get us there. That, that's all we're looking for. This is not, certainly authorization to go spend a million dollars on plans. The numbers that we came up with that are here are, are based on the feedback that we've gotten from staff effort, industry professionals that we've worked with. Again, all we're looking for is a little guidance so that we can run those projects down and, and bring you more accurate numbers. So I agree with you, Noel. We need more accurate numbers.
Thank you.
Just make a comment as well. I was on the Selection Committee for the design-build team that was going to build the Public Safety Building, which is not what we're after. The Public Safety Building at the time had an area for police with a Sallyport and a jail cell and all those types of things that the police need. And it also had a, a fire station attached to it. That's not what our intention is today. Our plans have changed, and we didn't spend the money. It was, if I recall properly, the, the town decided that having a bunch of residents on a selection committee for a project like that wasn't a good idea. And we've changed our procurement policy. Right about that point is when it began to change. And we had a new mayor right after that who didn't go for the idea. So we didn't spend the money. We, we had some conceptuals, is what it came down to.
That was also going to be our, the new Town Hall.
Town Hall was a separate building. We were just dealing with public safety at the time, but you're right. Town Hall was supposed to be alongside it.
Great, thank you. All right, Andy, you think you have what you need?
We do, and I thank you all for your time.
Awesome, thank you.
And your input.
And I have a list for the remainder.
We'll be back. Yeah. We'll be back. All right, public comment.
Mayor, there are none tonight.
Really, okay. I think we got one.
He missed the deadline.
Missed the deadline.
We have a late arrival.
He missed the deadline.
Mayor, we have one public speaker tonight.
Awesome.
Oh, thank you.
What you got, Noel?
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. I didn't speak when you were doing the redistricting thing, and I wish they had stayed. So, anyway, I got deja vu, because the last time we did the redistricting thing, I heard the exact same basic comments. And I would like this tape to be put aside for the next time you do redistricting. And every last one of you, review it before you get up here again. And take a look at it, because remember the last time we went from east-west districts to north-south districts, which we have now? That was the last time. Because the first time we did it, we decided east-west was the way to go, and now it's north-south districts, et cetera, et cetera. I see Steve going, eh.
It was a mess the first.
It was a mess the first time, yes. Well, we learned. But we're also having the same thing that we're, you're thinking, and a lot of us out in the audience are thinking the same thing, that these are voting districts. They're not residency candidacy, candidate districts. That you represent everyone in town, and we decided that what we were going to have was instead of possibility, the possibility of everyone living within two-block area, the entire council, and the rest of the town going, what? Where's my, my guys over here, you know? So instead of having at-large members, we have one at-large member, which is the mayor. And there were, everyone else, we say, they have to live in this residential area. And that's all we're picking out. We're not picking out anything other than that. You're not serving that set of voters to the exclusion of anybody else. You're serving the entire town because everyone in town votes for you. Everyone in your residential district could vote for you, and you could still lose for the simple reason that the rest of the town could vote you and say no. So let's just look at it like, this is where someone has to live in order they will be able to give a better idea of that area to the, not to the exclusion of other areas, but to the inclusion of this area better. So Bob can talk about out west better than David can talk about out west. And David can talk about east better than Bob can talk about east. So that's all it is. It's a residential district, not a voting area.
Got it.
Thank you.
All right.
He made it, he made it before the bell.
I know. Uh, do we have any board reports tonight?
Hi. So, on behalf of the Education Advisory Board, just wanted to thank everyone for the wonderful event, everyone that participated in the barn dance. It was wonderful to be able to have it this year. The weather was amazing, and it was just a, a great event. Thanks to everyone that supported it. And just wanted to give a special shout-out to Outback Steakhouse, that they sponsored it. They, they donated all the food for the event. It was delicious. So, if anyone's looking for a place to go, go get something to eat, make sure you go visit Outback.
Right, awesome.
Um, the other thing is the flamingo flocking. That fundraiser is coming to an end. They've, uh, they're ready to migrate somewhere else. But just wanted to also thank, I mean, that's one of those fundraisers that is just, it, it, again, it just shows how special this town is, because that is coming in from every end of the town, from District One all the way to District Four. It doesn't matter where anybody lives, those flamingos have made their way all across the way. And I just need to give a special shout-out to Jessica Hartman, who has put in tremendous effort, and without her, this would not have been such a successful event. I mean, the, all the other volunteers have done tremendous job, but she deserves a special shout-out. And just another reminder, the, the SEEK five K is coming up on April ninth in Rolling Oaks. Um, I know it always tends, those, the registrations always seem to be very last minute, but if, if anyone out there is gonna register for the event, please go, um, go on to the Run Sign Up for the Seek, um, it's called a Race for Unity and Diversity, to go ahead and sign up for that. And anyone who has kids in, um, in the schools or in high school, there's teams set up for all the surrounding high schools, Cooper City High School, Western High School, Wesfroward, and Cypress Bay. So, those teams are already, um, set up there. So, if you wanna register and then click that you wanna register for your high school, you can do that as well. And also, just also reiterating, the Jeremiah's fundraiser, this is, I don't know if y'all have been there, but it's delicious. Um, we found it when we visited my daughter at UCF. Now they're, now they're down here. But again, make sure that if you do go, it has to be the Pembroke Pines location, and make sure to mention that it's for the SEEK Youth Association, otherwise they don't get credit for it. Thanks so much.
Great, thank you, Debbie. Um, it is awesome to have all these events back in full swing again. We have missed them, and it's great to see everybody come out and just, uh, they're all, all these, all the work that, that, uh, board does, um, for a great cause, for the scholarships is just tremendous. And so, really encourage everybody to come out and do that. And thank you for mentioning Outback. They did an amazing job. And, uh, let's also, uh, you know, go by there and thank them with a, with a dinner, right? So, that's awesome, thank you. Um, all right. Seeing no other, board reports, um, council member comments?
I'll go.
Okay.
Got a few things to talk about. Um, first, uh, first off is the, uh, Easter egg hunt in Rolling Oaks on the second of, uh, April. The hunt starts at twelve. The bunny's gonna be there at eleven, Mr. Bunny. And he'll also be there after the hunt for more pictures. So, I just wanna get that out there. The five K that Ms. Green, uh, mentioned is coming up on the ninth, Saturday, AM. And also, I wanna just make mention for, uh, the applications for the scholarships is on the website. Click on that, and it, start filling out forms, uh, for all the teens and stuff like that, uh, and the college students to, to apply for that. Um, I wanna get into something a little bit more serious here. This, I gotta take you back in time a little bit, okay? Um, you weren't on the council at that time. We were dealing with, uh, a possible tractor supply that was going on. And it was a quasi-judicial matter. And we had, uh, various members of the council, including the mayor, meeting privately with the tractor supply people. I refused to meet with anybody. Um, and, uh, I kept talking to Keith, you know, that, that there should be a law, there should be something, there should be an ordinance that prohibits this. Uh, 'cause you don't know what's being said. It's not being done in the sunshine. It's being done behind closed doors. You don't know if any deals have been made. It, it could be completely innocent, it could not be. It could be hockey seats, it could be dinners, it could be a cruise. Yeah, you know, you, you don't, you don't know where it goes. So, I kept complaining to Keith that there should be, uh, a, you know, a law on that, that we could do that. And we talked about it, and we really felt that at that time, it would have been a waste of time with the council that was serving at that time. It would've gone nowhere. You know, it's just been beating up. Um, I think we got a different council now. Um, we're eighteen months into this new council, and it's, it's a council I trust. And in speaking to Keith, and him speaking through, uh, other colleagues and all that, and, uh, particularly, uh, we, we spoke with, uh, Miguel down in Dade County. They had come up with a, a method to stop the shenanigans that they were having. And I asked Keith to get that language and bring it forward for our next, uh, to put it on our next agenda. And basically, you know, and I, I go back to Circle S as a perfect example. Um, Jim and, uh, the mayor were my confidants. They were not on the council at the time. They were the only people I could talk to. I refused to meet with Circle S contractors. And the impression, the, the pressure was enormous, um, that was going on. And basically, what Circle S wanted to do at that time was turn that entire enclave into a miniature Weston. But they knew because of the five-o vote, I could stop it. And the pressure to meet, and, and millions of dollars was hinging on this. And, um, it brought them to the... What's going on? Oh, okay. Um, millions of dollars were hinging on them coming to the table. And I can't help but feel that the five-o vote and my lack of meeting with them brought them to the table, uh, very quickly. And, and it worked out, okay? To, to the best that we could've gotten it worked out within our code, within our codes. Um, you know, this council, I, you know, I trusted to protect the future of the town. And I'm just going down some talking points, uh, right now. And, um... I asked Keith to come up to, with the, uh, the ordinance from, uh, Dade County to mirror that for us to consider, um, and bring it forward on the next, uh, meeting. And I really feel strongly, as you all know, I know, I don't meet with anybody. After, after the first year I was up here, I had some, some things that go wrong, and I had one person say, well, you led me to believe, you know, when I did nothing. Um, but, you know, just sit there and nod my head. Um, so, uh, I think that we need to have an ordinance put in place that prohibits the council members on any quasi-judicial manner to, uh, further, uh, have any sidebar, or have any private meetings with any applicants or anything like that. Um, I wanna put it all out in the sunshine, in the public, where everybody can, you know, see, there, there's nothing to hide. There's no smoke, no mirrors, no, no deals being cut or anything like that. Not to say that there was in the past, but I think this would eliminate that totally. And I need, obviously, I need the council's support on this and something like that. And I wanna bring it forward. And Keith, if you wanna...
Yeah, I, I just wanna chime in one thing. Um, and, and please, the, the ordinance that I quickly, uh, did for tonight is just every portion of the, the ordinance in the town code. We're gonna modify it before, you know, I didn't have a chance to speak, 'cause this came up in the last couple of days. Um, one thing that occurred when, oh, when the Vice Mayor contacted me and say, hey, how's Miami Dade County doing this, and we're not doing this, what happened? And I said, I have no idea, quite frankly. And I, I called Miami Dade's Ethics, and I said, how, how, you know, what's your rules on quasi-judicial procedure, uh, with ex parte, uh, meetings? And, and one thing that's wrong about what I sent you, the, the issue was not you all going on-site visits or driving past a property or walking a property. The issue that, and, and that's in here too, and that's why I gotta clean it up a bit. The issue that the Vice Mayor called me on was straight ex parte meetings with developers, applicants, and not being out in the open for the public to see what is occurring at those meetings. So, Miami Dade County apparently has this rule that I didn't know about, because I don't do much there, that under no circumstance are their commissioners allowed to meet with applicants on quasi-judicial matters. And, and I called them and finally spoke to their head attorney, and I said, you know, tell me what you did, what is the law here? And they said, oh, it's very simple. Florida statute specifically precludes people from meeting with council members on quasi-judicial matters unless the municipality waives that requirement and, and puts it in their code that they are allowed to. So, state law says you can't unless the municipality says you can't. So, Miami Dade County got sued in a case called Jennings. Everyone speaks about Jennings rules, Jennings rule. They got sued, a- and what happened in that case is there was a presumption of impropriety, because an applicant met with a commissioner, and that commissioner voted in favor of the applicant. So, after that, they said, no, we have to change state law and not allow this to occur anymore. So, if the council, and, and it would require three votes of the council, so it would require a majority vote, decides that it does not want those one-on-one meetings anymore to occur, all we have to do is take it out of our code and default to state law, which already precludes it. And so, what Councilmember Jablonsky called me on a couple of days ago, when he said, how do we do this? It turned out to be very simple. It's not really us doing anything. It's just removing the language from our code that overrides state law. You know, and, and so, that, that's where we're at. I have to clean it up a little bit before I bring it back to you on, on first reading. But, um, that was his, you know, concept, and I think I articulated what you were looking for.
Yeah, exactly.
Keith, I have, I've got, what is that language that says, that, that over, that, what is our language that overrides the state now?
Sure. It, it's the ordinance in front of you. I blacklined it just so you could quickly see the code provisions, uh, at issue. A lot of that can stay in, like site visits and all of that. That's not where you all were concerned. It was mainly the one-on-one meetings. You put a provision in the code, you meaning prior councils, I think it was two thousand, uh, fifteen or somewhere like that, it was amended, the code, to say that the council's allowed to have ex parte communications, provided that they disclose those ex parte communications. That's what's stated in the code today that were, uh, uh, the ordinance would eliminate. So, it allows it, but it says you'd have to disclose it.
And the state prohibits that altogether?
The state says you can't meet at all unless the council says otherwise.
Then we just simply have to abide by what the state says.
So, you have a choice now. You can either continue doing what you're doing today, or just eliminate it from your code and revert to state law.
But if we continue to do what we're doing, aren't we breaking state law?
No, because the state law specifically states that you can decide otherwise.
Okay.
It gives you the option. Miami Dade County did, uh, already what council, what the Vice Mayor is suggesting, which was they just removed it from their code and reverted to state law.
Yeah, I think, I think this will give us a degree of protection, um, and also for the administration. It'll, it'll make their, their job easier. Not, not that it needs to be easier, but it'll be cleaner, because they, they're obligated to bring everything to us on an individual basis now. With, when it's quasi-judicial, basically, it's, it's hands-off. And I really, I really, as you all know, I feel really strongly about that. I've emphasized it for, for ten, for ten years now.
Well, when I found out that you did that and why, I haven't had another conversation. It's been over three years.
Yeah, it works.
No, wait. My answer to everybody is the same, and I think I said it here at the last council meeting. We're acting as judges. We have to be impartial. If we start getting wined and dined, or we're having meetings with these people while they're persuading us, we're no longer impartial.
Right. Yeah, exactly, exactly. In this way, it's all out in, all out in the public. There's no question mark about anything that we do or not do, or, you know, when we're away from here.
Let me, let me ask you a question. This only covers, the, the intent here is only to cover quasi-judicial, not contracts or deals, let's just call them, like, uh, the one that happened out on the CCA site. I, I have a real issue with that. Uh, maybe we can craft something similar, and if you want me to wait till it's my turn. But I would throw out that we should not be involved in any contract negotiations, any discussions with potential, um, uh, you know, potential suitors or, you know, uh, buyers. That's why I felt strongly and, and asked the questions I did at the last, uh, council meeting on, well, is any council members involved in negotiation? Because to me, that was, that's a bad idea. You know, it, it, it throws, uh, it throws shade on whoever is involved in those, and it starts, you start asking what's in it for them, why, is this their friend, et cetera, et cetera? I thought that that was a horrible idea.
There's a lot of red flags.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and this, this would eliminate considerable amount of that.
Yeah, so maybe we, they're probably separate things, Keith, but...
They are, but they could be included.
Okay.
All right, so i- if the council desires, I would redraft to include that provision as well.
So, you would, you'd have one ordinance that covers both of these?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that would be the way to go.
I'd agree with that.
Keith, I just a question for you, just, uh, clarify something. So, if somebody came in and that was, it was going to be a, a quasi-judicial item, and, uh, let's say they had a meeting with, uh, an HOA, um, would that affect us? How would this, how would that affect us participating in that?
It, it wouldn't, because those are notice meetings, where the public could see and hear what transpired while you were standing.
So, any noticed meeting is okay?
Not a problem.
Gotcha, okay. All right, good.
It, it just stops an only quasi-judicial behind closed doors meeting between an applicant and a council member. Now, now, one thing I'll mention, just because Councilmember Hartman just brought it up, I didn't include land use in this as well. So, that would be up to you to decide if that was, you know, your desire. So, if an applicant wanted to change the land use on a property, that's not deemed to be quasi-judicial. That's, as everyone knows, uh, you know, legislative i- in effect, and therefore, it wouldn't hold to the same legal standard as quasi-judicial. So, if you wanted me to include that as well, I'm happy to, but I didn't consider that.
Yeah, I mean, for me personally, I think quasi-judicial is pretty unique. We do sit as judges, like we're saying, we do sit as judges, so I think that's pretty unique. I think that we have to balance that protection versus giving access to the public to talk to us. You know, I mean, we, we could isolate ourselves so much that we can't even talk to the public. We've kinda been there with the lobbyists. You know, we had that lobbyist rule where every time you talked to the public, you had to write it down and report it. It got crazy, so, so I just wanna keep a balance there. Um, I think the quasi-judicial is pretty unique.
Perfect. So, is the desire right now quasi-judicial and, and direct contracts between the town and a particular party? Are those the two issues that you all are worried about?
When we say direct con- contract, in- involving a piece of property, is it limited? Well, I, I just, I, you know, um, I'm, I'm not objecting to it. I just wanna get the wording, the, the intent proper, right? Because we, we have these things come through. What's, what's our, what's our involvement? You know, what, what is the amount of involvement that we want? Because we wanna, we wanna hear about it, we wanna be able to provide feedback on it. So, I just wanna, where, what's, where do you draw the line?
Well, hearing about it, knowing about it, yeah.
Okay.
Negotiating it, no. That's the town administration's responsibility. If, if, I, I can see it. I mean, I've got a guy on my street who's in the AC business. Uh, he might decide to bid on a contract with the town. He may come down the street and ask me, what's this all about? Can you explain it to me? Sure, I'd probably direct him to Andy anyway. But now, that's the limits of my...
Can you give, can you give feedback to Andy on, from that conversation, things you'd like included or not included in the contract?
Good question. I would probably say no, because the person's probably asking me to add those, and I don't know enough about, take AC out, put whatever in. I don't know enough about it to really try to make that determination.
See, I, I get a little, I, I, it's good intent, but if I feel like I, I understand something about this contract or whatever, I wanna be able to provide that feedback.
But you're not negotiating it.
I don't want my hands tied. No, 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 I'm not, I'm not gonna be there negotiating it. But I wanna be able to point out to Andy what I think are the important things that should be included or excluded from the contract, maybe based on my conversation with the individual.
I've had those discussions with Russell and Andy on IT-related items.
Yeah, I...
So, I see what you mean.
I think, I think this is just a, a lot more, there's, we need to do some more discussion on what you're saying. I, I like the intent.
Right.
But I think it needs, whereas the quasi-judicial, to me, that's pretty... But I think it needs, whereas the quasi judicial, to me, that's pretty cut and dry.
That's right. I agree with you.
Well, it'll come back.
Keith, I'm not sure if you're, we're, we're talking about on the contract side, we need more discussion.
I, I, I heard that and I figured that. I was, I, I agree with both of you for different reasons personally. I, I think that yes, a, a contract like that CCA property, there should have been a hands-off from, from the, the council on that.
Right.
But I agree that sometimes you all have a unique expertise and I was just talking, even when the, the mayor and I met concerning the charter officials' contracts and contractual changes, that that could have impacted that. So I, I think you would be tying your hands a little bit much. And so maybe we can just take the one step now on the quasi judicial and if you see an issue in the future, point it out and, and then we can bring it back and order it.
I don't expect to see that issue with this council.
I don't either.
But I still worry.
But maybe a PPP, you know?
Yeah.
Maybe that's, maybe that's the line where it should be drawn. I don't know. We, we need to talk about it.
Yeah.
But I think maybe that, that may be the line.
Good.
Okay. So, anti rape.
What were you talking about?
Hopefully that'll become before us at the next meeting. Keith will have, Andy will have something put together for us and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Who'd like to go next?
I'd be happy to. So I also wanted to thank the, the Ed Board on the Barn Dance. It was a blast. I wish everybody would come from the town. It's so much fun. It was also the first indoor event we've had since COVID started. So it was great to be around all of our friends and acquaintances that support those types of, of events. I hope they made a million dollars on it. Also, I think there was a mention of the, the farmer's market. This weekend is the grand opening. Last weekend was kind of the soft launch to work out any bugs and fortunately it was done, you know, this thing was so well done that there were no real significant issues, which I was really glad to hear. But we'll do the little bit of a ribbon cutting and those types of things this coming weekend and give the mayor all the accolades for keeping this thing alive for, I think it's about 10 years.
It's been a long time. It's been a journey.
Yeah. Yeah. It's, it's, journey is a good way to put it. I always envisioned it over at, at the Equestrian Park because that was really our first developed park, but I'm, I'm in love with the place it's in now. I mean, it's, it's the perfect location. So I think it, the kickoff of it, I think it opens at 10, but we're going to have a little event at 10:30. So I would encourage everybody to come on out and bring your, bring all your spare change because I wasn't there last week, but my wife had a chance to go and she said, there's a million and one things to do there and, and buy and see. So it'll be an event every week. All right. I also have something, I guess more on the serious side as well to, to bring up. And I don't know if I should wait a minute, but I want to explain a situation that is, is happening throughout town on the private roads. And I'm talking about the private roads that have been paved, not the dirt roads, because I don't want to muddy the waters on this literally. So back about probably three months ago, one of the neighbors on my street hit a pothole on the street and caused damage. They got in touch with code enforcement and code enforcement has every right to cite the, the residents for not maintaining our road. We have to do that. I, I argued with, with Julio, what is this? How can you chart, you know, how can you cite them for it? But we have a responsibility to maintain. So, you know, at that point, I realized he's definitely doing the right thing. And I don't know the numbers and I don't know who called it in because I didn't ask those questions. When my neighbor started asking me, who called code? I figured, let me find out what's going on after they explained it. Well, code did its job and, and because our road is paved, geez, in about 1990, so over 30 years ago, the road's starting to deteriorate, just like all the rest of the roads around town. Well, now, somebody on the street who drives a very expensive sports car hit a significantly deep pothole that's been created recently and it cost him, I think he said 1,200 for the wheel and 450 for the tire. So, you know, he started contacting me weekly until I had an opportunity to, again, get code out there to start taking a look at it. And bottom line is, you know, the individual who's got the gigantic pothole in front of their house, I believe code is working on with, trying to get it resolved. But the difference between a town road and a private road is that the town maintains the, the town property and the residents have to maintain the private roads. And the difference is that if there's a pothole on, you know, on any one of the town roads, resident calls it in, the town sends out the contractor, they fix the hole and, and everything is, is resolved. With potholes on a street, a private road, I mean, somebody has to call the town and engage them and, and file the complaint. And that's why this guy contacted me. He does not want to file a complaint. So you know whose name it's under. In any case, what we're, what, what I think might make sense is another addition to our proactive code enforcement. Code patrols our streets all the time. Code is up and down. I run into Marlin on the weekends and others from the code team on weekdays. And they, if they spot a pothole, if it was a proactive item, they could basically contact the resident and cite them or do whatever's necessary. The pothole gets fixed in a couple of weeks, not much different than the town. You don't end up like my street was originally with 16 or 18 potholes because nobody wants to call anybody in and it becomes dangerous as, as the most recent vehicle proved. I mean, the guy didn't, wasn't injured, but if he would have gone a little faster, he probably could have hurt himself. But in any case, in my mind, this is one of those items that it's relatively narrow, but it also stops people from having to rat out their neighbors because there's a pothole in front of their house, which I can't think of a worse reason to rat out a neighbor. You know, it's a safety issue though. It's definitely a safety issue. So I wanted to open that up for a bit of discussion on, on what you guys think about this. So I'm, I'm not sure if you heard the whole thing, Gary, but proactive.
Do you want to go proactive on, on, on potholes?
On private roads.
On road, on road repair?
Road, well, I'm just saying.
Talking road shoulders too, or no?
No, no. I'm, because I'm just suggesting that it's potholes on, on private paved roads.
Andy's got his hand.
Sure.
Just one thing I want to add to it. And council member, I think you did a great job explaining the issue.
Thank you.
There's, one thing you said, you said it would allow code enforcement to go out there and be proactive.
Right.
Which is fine, but in some ways it puts the onus on them to find it. What, what this allows is one step further than that, is it allows somebody to call in and report it to us, but they don't have to list their name as a complainant. That's really the most important part of it. So we can still get those calls, but, but whoever reports it won't be listed as the complainant, which offers them the protection that I think you're looking for.
Yes. Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you.
I, I think it's good. I don't have a problem with it. I think it solves a problem. I like it. I do have a question. Andy, in a situation like that, is there any process or facility in place to where that owner that actually owns the road there could have that pothole repaired at their own cost, but under the contract at the rates that the town is paying and have our town vendor do the work? They're paying for it. It's not coming out of tax dollars. But, you know, so it's consistent with everything else in town. And the reason why I say that is number two reasons. One is, a lot of people don't, you know, it's not something they normally have a, a pothole repair person that they've worked with in the past, you know? The other thing is, I know somebody on my block, and I'm waiting to see how this works out, took it a step further and filled the pothole with cement.
That's what they do on my street.
You know? And so when they come through there with the equipment to ground that down, I'm waiting to see how that works out, you know? So I'm thinking that if it was more consistent and working with the same vendor, probably they'd get it for a better price. Our vendor gets more work. I think it's a win-win for everything. I just don't know if there's a, a facility to do that or not.
No, that's something we would explore with our vendor and they might be able to work that into their, their normal rounds. You know, I, I have some, some questions about working through that, but there's certainly not a problem with us referring our vendor, our contract vendor to, to the homeowner from that standpoint and, and perhaps trying to tie their repairs into their regularly scheduled sweeps and repairs in our town so that they're, they're mobilizing once to do those repairs, even if they need to bill the homeowner for that.
Andy, just, probably not going to like me saying this, but in other municipalities I work in, they will actually even fix the pothole directly, the municipality, and build a homeowner through code enforcement and, and force them to pay it. I know you have to expend some money, you know, outlay it, but it's minor, but they just...
That's minor and perhaps we give them the option and, and that becomes the alternative.
Right. So they can be cited and then if they don't fix it immediately, the vendor does it and then it goes to them anyway.
Yeah, that would work. That'd be great. That'd be great.
That's a good idea.
And it solves a problem for the, for the homeowner, you know? Because where do you find?
Yeah, there's only like three potholes.
Give weekly a call. I need one pothole filled. It's not going to go over well.
The mobilization on that's 500 bucks.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, yeah. That's a good idea. And you're right. They are filling with concrete. I mean, I'm amazed, only big sign of the difference. There are only two lots have filled their spots with. But here's the difference. A bag of concrete's eight bucks. I bought three bags of asphalt. They're $14 a piece and that's before oil went on. But good, good.
Good. Makes sense.
So we'll add that and Andy will work through the process.
Yeah, let me just make sure, rest of the council, any, any thoughts on making that proactive on private roads?
I'm on board.
Okay. All right.
The homeowner can, can they do their own pothole? Fix their own?
Sure.
Bag of sack reed and a torch?
They, they certainly can. Like I said, you don't know what they're going to fill it with. And, and if they want to take care of it themselves, that's, that's their prerogative, you know? But I, you know, I think it would be good if, if we could keep it consistent.
I'm not disagreeing, but you may get, you may get somebody that's eager to.
Yeah, then do it.
Go to Home Depot and gets a bag of sack reed and...
I mean, the, the concept is the same as excess fault. You either haul it off yourself or you pay them to do it. That's your choice. Yep.
Yeah, the proactive part I have no problem.
Good. Thank you, guys. Who'd like to go next? Jim?
Yes. Mayor, I'd like to say thank you to Ms. Bartman, but she's not here right now. When she mentioned $793,000 in the appropriations for Green Meadows, that would pretty much make Green Meadows, if that came through and they used that to finish, one of the first sections in town that would be completely drained, installed and all. And I think that'd be great. I know the residents are screaming and hollering because the streets are tore up. And last meeting, the residents suggested that we notify them ahead of time. I assure you, if that 793 comes through and the projects do start, I'll knock on their door one by one and tell them what's coming because I get phone calls all the time.
I know you will, Jim. Awesome.
Right. I had, I had Rod out there today with another complaint from someone. And I, and I do thank Rod. Is he here? There he is. Okay. All right. He answers. I've had Russell out there and he answers. And, and there's really not much you can do. With a contractor, when he's done, he's done. But until that time, you put up with a mess and you know that. You've seen it. The, the phase two of, of the project is winding down. They are starting to put in the grass. They are starting to clean the swells up. So I won't get as many phone calls until this next project comes through. So we'll, we'll just have to see what happens with that. I attended the Broward League of Cities Directors' meeting last week and the talk there was the same thing that you heard from Ms. Bartman, that there's all kind of legislation coming down to hurt the towns. The right of the towns is being infringed upon. They're making it so that we can't rule our own towns. And I'm not sure why Tallahassee would decide to do that. It makes no sense to me. I think we have, we have the better judgment of what's going on in our own town, but I mean, this is, this is something we're fighting and it's horrible. It really is. Tomorrow I have a Broward County Water Board meeting and I've looked at the agenda and this meeting is dealing a lot with the septic tanks. They're pushing very hard to get rid of septic tanks in Broward County. There's a two and a half hour study that's being done. I'll, I'll be in it on 9:30 and listen to what they have to say. I know it's difficult for Southwest Ranches to get involved with sewers. We have no plant close by that could facilitate, you know, us all having sewers, but this is something that the county's pushing for. She spoke about the water coming up and the water coming up, the saltwater intrusion will ruin the septic tanks, you know? It, it'll destroy them, the water coming up into them. So I'll, I'll be on that tomorrow for about a couple hours to see what's going on there. The Rural Arts Board, of which I attended the meeting the other night, they have a photo contest coming up. They'll be announcing that. And if you get a chance to go by and see the mural on the wall, the young lady that's doing it there from Sunshine Ranch is doing a great job. It'll be something that, you know, that you can see as you go by. I'd like to see more of the wall. It's only six panels right now and the wall's probably 200 foot long and we've got 50 foot of it painted, but maybe that's something we can work on in the future. We are working real hard and we should have a Zoom meeting for Green Meadows coming up.
Nice.
We actually have about 10, about 10 couples that are very interested. So we're sending out emails now with the ID for the Zoom that they can get on board and maybe we can get the Green Meadows Association started back. I'd really like to see that. And got to come up with a name because I have three areas. I have Ivanhoe, Green Meadows and Deems Ranches. So somehow we have to combine a name for that. So maybe we'll have some kind of a contest for that too, or so, like we did for the Meadows Sanctuary, you know, like we, for naming that. But with that, Mr. Mayor, thank you for this evening and that's all I got. Thank you.
You know, you know, Jim, you could call it dig. Deems, Ivanhoe, Green Meadows. Just a suggestion. All right. Very good. David?
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Mr. Mayor, I've got five individual items and then three items that kind of touch on legal. Should I approach legal when we get the legal comments or should I discuss it all into my comments in general?
I would say go for it.
All right. Thanks. All right. There was some complaints to the, from the neighbors about damaged guard rails in Sunshine Ranches. Let everybody know those parts are on order. The appropriation has been approved. We're just waiting for the parts to come in. The Bonaventure Bridge, we are working to have a designated equestrian pass-through. And my idea is to have, actually have stanchions designating an area off of that bridge where the horses and pedestrians and bicycles could go through that same area to be protected from the cars. I spoke with the mayor, I think it was last Friday. She supports the issue and...
Of Weston.
Of Weston. Mayor of Weston, yes. Peggy Brown.
No sunshine law if you're here.
Correct. Correct. Thank you for correct. The mayor of Weston, yeah, Peggy Brown is actually supports this issue. So it looks like it's coming to fruition and it's just something we got to work on and keep fighting for. Want to let everybody in Sunshine Ranches know that the Waste Pro bulk pickup, that delay, I went down Lou Ray a couple of days and that stuff was piling up, but I was advised that if it's not picked up by now, it should be very soon. They just had some delays with the company. They weren't ignoring. Remind folks that if you're selling an item, whether it's on eBay or Facebook and the person has to come to your home, don't let them come to your home. Davie Police will meet with you in the parking lot right here at Town Hall, 134 Double O Griffin Road to make sure you have a safe transaction. You don't know whom you're dealing with. It's possible that the person that you're dealing with and you may invite to your home, they may have ulterior motives of coming to your home. And you certainly don't want to have an adverse situation. So it's safer just to do it here in the parking lot and Davie Police will be there to make sure it's safe. Tis Door, Transportation Surface Drainage Ongoing Rehabilitation Program. The road paving projects have been moving forward. Remind folks that if your road is being paved and you live on your road, you know where things are supposed to be on your road and you see something that looks like a defect... where things are supposed to be on your road and you see something that looks like a defect. You know, I'm not going to know what would be a defect on Bob's road or on Steve's road, but they would know. If you notice something that's a defect, point it out, give us a call here at town, call me and we'll make sure it gets put on the punch list at the end before it is closed out. Couple of, on the legal issues. I had, earlier I wanted to do, mention something about wanted to, with elections coming up. I know during the last election season, I noticed there was some abuse with vacant lots and election signs on vacant lots. And I, I look at it now, if you have a homeowner and somebody puts out a sign in front of their home, if the homeowner doesn't want that sign there, they can just walk out there and throw it away. But if it's a vacant lot, that vacant lot owner may not even live in Broward County, may not even live in Florida. They don't know what's on their property. And it was something that I really want to put an additional regulation on for vacant lots that would, I, I personally would like to see it pinned to the candidate, but I don't know if that's legally permissible. But it's something that I really felt was abused at the last term of elections. We'd drive by the road and see signs on vacant property and who knows if they even know, knew the signs were there. Also with the election signs, let's see, Jeff Cohen had mentioned to me that putting out the signs way, way, way down the line, outside of the parameters of federal and state laws, he, he said that's violation of First Amendment. And I would just like to see, be allowed to put out an election sign as long as it coincides with the state and federal laws. Because it's a First Amendment issue and, you know, Jeff Cohen mentioned that, you know, it could be a violation of First Amendment. So I was just like, okay, I'll talk about that. And he mentioned that to me probably two years ago.
Dave?
Yes?
Regarding the election signs and vacant lots and stuff like that, is in the town right of way, we do have an ordinance where a private citizen can remove the sign.
If it's in the right of way?
If it's in the right of way.
Right. I was thinking like on a fence.
If it's not in the right of way.
Right.
But I'm just saying, but if it's in the right of way, we, a private citizen can remove it.
All right, thanks.
I have a question though about the comment with Jeff Cohen, because I've had that same feeling. He doesn't believe, he believes it's a violation of First Amendment, that failed paperwork.
That too, right.
That too. I'm sorry, then what were you referring to?
Being, putting them out, when you can put them out, we have a regulation on and you can't put your signs out.
Sixty days prior.
Sixty days prior. Yeah, the, but you know, state and federal, you can put out much sooner.
I see.
That was just something that, just kind of parallel to state and federal law. Let's see. I know Mr. Allen, Mr. Ruben Allen, he had the problem with the FPL feeder line and I know that there was an issue, I, I, you know, I do insurance work for my career. And I don't know if Mr. Ruben's claim comes in against the vendor's insurance company as a third party or a first party claim. And, and it's a significant difference. A third party in, in an aspect is they're not insured. They're a person making a claim against another person's policy. But a first party would be like you have your home and you're suing your own homeowner's insurance, that's a first party. Now, in Florida law, it's significantly different because if you're a first party claim suing your own insurance company, you automatically get your attorney's fees in addition to those damages. Much like Senate Bill 620, which I'm going to, I may have additional questions about that. And if there is a way that in the future, I don't know if it could apply to Mr. Ruben now, that if a resident has a similar damage from a vendor that is, and the, I know the town is put on as a co-insurer, that if the resident would be able to get their attorney's fees added against that insurance company for the delays. Because I think the delay that Mr. Ruben was facing or is facing is, is not justified. It is not fair. That he had, he did nothing wrong. He was sitting in his home and the vendor caused a damage and now it's up to him to go after that insurance. And I don't know if his attorney's fees come in through a first party or a third party claim or whether he has to put it out of his own pocket. I'm just looking at the fairness aspect on that. And Robin brought up the issue with Senate Bill 620, where businesses would be able to sue the town for basically almost anything. And I just had a stretch of my head looking at this and I was wondering what type of businesses would be allowed to do this in our town? What type of business? Obviously equestrians, we've always allowed equestrian operating businesses. We've allowed certain home goods businesses to operate. But like if we have a business that's not authorized under the, under the town charter, anything like that, such as a bottling company or a casino, would they be protected under this, this law? Would the gentleman that operates the dump next to Kalas, would they be able to bring a lawsuit under this? He claimed it was his business and if he has been doing it for three years, would, would he be protected to do that since that type of business is not authorized under the charter? So those are some of my questions and hopefully we can get some answers and help out with our residents and the town. That wraps up my comments.
Great, thank you, David. Yeah, that's a real issue. We'll have to see how that plays out, Keith, for your.
I'm happy to.
Yeah, I wonder, answer, talk about that. That, that I think is a real danger for our town, I think. There's a lot of things going on in Tallahassee that are, are really, home rule is, is, is a vague memory in the past and it's a shame. It is scary, yeah. I, I think you all covered pretty much everything that I was going to touch on. I will just say that I heard a lot of great things from the farmer's market last weekend, which is awesome. I'm really looking forward to enjoying it this weekend. And I did, I wasn't there because I was in Oklahoma. And so every time I go out to Oklahoma, when I go to Oklahoma, I'm not going to Tulsa, I'm not going to Oklahoma City. I'm going to rural Oklahoma where my wife's family lives. And it's always, it's always enjoyable to go out there and, and get, get the feel of, of rural America and bring it back to the ranches again. Kind of renews the spirit of where we're going and what we're doing. It's an awesome place and I had a great weekend. But I will leave it at that. All right. Legal comments?
Sure, mayor, council. Couple of things, I didn't get into it in the redistricting, but I just wanted to finish my thought on that, but I didn't want to stop. And that was when you have a district of 2,000 people and you know that there's going to be 125 to 150 residents moving in, it's fully justifiable to look at a line now knowing that, that district is going to be over any legal limit. Because if you have a district of 2,000, 200 is 10%. So you're already over 5% with just 100. So that's why I just suggest that you all look at it. And someone made a, a comment, I think it might've been Newell, you know, that we're talking about voting districts, Mayor, you even mentioned that as well. And the reason why that's important in the, in the grand scheme of things is the residents who move into the CC Home Community or, or that other one that Councilmember Albritton mentioned Magnolli, I think it's called or used to be called, they'll be moving in in two years, you know, two and a half years. You start to know who your district commissioner is, even though that district commissioner votes, you know, townwide. And, and you want to try to keep consistency in a district, you know, for that voting purpose, for, you know, who is my direct representative. And if you're going to be changing it, knowing today that it's going to have to be changed, you know, seven years after that person moves in, it's just something to think about. And that's the only reason why I mentioned it.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think it's a valid point. I personally could not vote for a district line that is outside the 5%. I'll just tell you that right off the bat. I'm not going to vote for something that technically would create legal issues down there. Even if I feel comfortable that.
Oh, I'm not talking outside of it.
I think that you, when you said that, you know, that we would grow into it into the next year, I, I could not do that. But I could do it on the, on the lower end so that it kind of bounds out.
That's what I meant.
Because a lot of things also, it's, it's tough to predict. You know, there's a whole section in country estates that if it were to develop, could, could massively change, you know, the, the district line.
And I don't think that is legally justifiable. I think homes that are currently under construction that we know are going to get.
If you go down like minus 3% or 4%, knowing that'll grow towards.
These weren't minus, these were all plus 3% in that district. And that's where I was immediately seeing that it would jump over eight immediately. And then, you know, I know they'll bring it back, but I just wanted to finish my thought on that. Andy, myself and Russell met with MG3 this week about the, the P3. We had a very good meeting, Andy might bring it up as well. We're getting closer in terms. They're starting their due diligence, they, they've hired environmentalists, engineers, site plan, architects, anything you can think of. And we're still very hopeful that we're on the path to bring it for, before you in the next, you know, 60 days with a comprehensive package for approval. So everything looks good on that.
Hey Keith, just a quick question. Is there anything, where do we, where, where do we sit with the prior deal? I know there was talk of litigation there. Is that, is anything happening there or not?
Nothing.
Okay.
All right. So we also met on Monday, I just wanted to disclose everything now with Akai Estates. They're on the agenda, we'll discuss more when their item comes up, that meeting. But I just wanted to let everyone know that Andy, myself and Russell and Jeff Katums met with them as well. An issue came up from the Vice Mayor that he mentioned to me, that there's some, been some debates at the lower board levels about procedural issues and parliamentarian and procedure issues. And I told Council, the Vice Mayor, if anyone sees that at a lower board meeting or has a question, even someone on that board, feel free to email me, ask me the procedural question. I'm not billing anyone for it. I'll respond immediately and, and hopefully I can address any issues that they have as they may arise to try to avoid issues. So I just want to mention that. The signage issue that Councilmember Kozinski mentioned, one thing I could tell you on it, what your last election proved is that signs don't vote. Okay? And I, I think that's a very important concept for everyone to realize. Because the, the town was blanketed by signs by people who did not win seats in the election. So I, I can, I tell you that even if a sign's on a vacant lot, that vacant lot's not, not voting. And the only reason I mention this is, is, is where Jeff Cohen is 100% correct. Political speech is the most protected speech in the United States and it's very difficult to craft language of when you can remove a sign, who can post a sign, who gets fined by a sign because it's political speech. Where Jeff Cohen and I went at odds was, and you mentioned it before, was two, three years ago, he posted a sign for a judge that he wanted at the circuit court level on his property like in April, you know, or May, you know? And he wanted it up there, this giant banner and code enforcement cited him and he started with, it's my First Amendment right, you know, to, to put the sign. We provided him with the law that says if you treat everyone equally and the same, you know, there is justification that you can't have that sign up. And he actually did comply. He's still upset about it even today, but he did, he did comply and, and remove that sign. So I, I just wanted, you know, to mention, we are looking into your issue and I appreciate your issue and we're going to try to find something that works. But at the end of the day, I don't think it's in this town particularly, that it's really made a major difference. So I, I just wanted to mention that.
We should also give Ms. Stewart's Judge Jeff Cohen.
I, I didn't want to throw that out there. Especially that I might've disagreed, but that's okay. The other mention that you all mentioned was the, the House bill that Representative Bartman mentioned. I actually don't think the final version of that bill impacts the town as much as the original version of that bill did. And let me tell you why. The bill was watered down greatly by the League of Cities. It did two things. One thing, attorney's fees are no longer mandatory. It says may instead of shall. In Broward County, the chances of a judge awarding attorney's fees against a municipality is de minimis, you know, because it comes from the taxpayer. Two, what the bill really says, and I read it the other day, is that if a legally established business, legally established, meaning certificate of use, approved, everything else, business, has been in existence for three years and then the municipality passes a law to kick that business out, to close it down or impact it in any way, then the municipality needs to pay damages to that business. Okay? It's identical to the Burt Harris Act, but for businesses. It's identical to the federal takings claims that you could have, you know, if you're taking someone's property. So in the town, I don't see it to be as much of a potential issue, especially as Councilmember Kozinski said, I don't think this council's going after equestrian businesses, you know, or ag businesses. So what are we really talking about? We're talking about Kokina Plaza and, you know, Lowe's Publix. So I, I don't think it's going to have that big of a threat or an impact to Southwest Ranches. It has a significant impact to probably every other municipality in Broward County because they constantly regulate pawn shops and things of that nature and where they're going and how they're open. So I, I just wanted to mention that on that one. And Councilmember Kozinski, did you have another question on there? Did I?
Yeah, I just, and you had touched on a business, a pawn shop. If somebody creates a pawn shop not authorized under, under the charter, that would, that would be a non-legally authorized business.
Correct.
Right, so somebody doing a bottling company, somebody running a casino, those would be non-authorized.
Correct.
All right. That's, that clears it up. Thanks.
All right, other than that, no further legal comments, Mayor.
Thank you, Keith. Andy?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mayor. And, and I'll be very, very brief. First of all, I'll just say I look forward to seeing you all on Saturday at the farmer's market. Second, after almost 10 years in this town, I had a very unique experience earlier tonight. A usually infallible resident confessed to me that he was wrong about something. And I'll just leave it at that.
Really? You don't want to say any names?
I'm glad we got that on the record. All right, awesome. All right, item number 12.
Item number 12, Mayor, is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida vacating, closing and abandoning platted and unplatted portions of Akai Drive, Southwest 49th Street, and associated turn lane and turnaround easements within the Tara Plot. Recorded in Plot Book 162, page 20 of the Public Records of Broward County, Florida. Accepting the grant of an ingress egress drainage and utility easement in place of the abandoned platted right of way and unplatted ingress egress easement for Akai Drive. Accepting the grant of a recreational trail easement. Authorizing the preparation and execution of effectuating documents, providing instructions to the town clerk, providing for recordation, providing for conflicts, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
No. Great, thank you. Do I have a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second.
Mayor, if I may speak on this a little bit, and I know the applicants in the audience and, and I just want to jump in directly and Andy may correct me or jump in as well. I, I missed the meeting when this was approved, but I did watch the video. It was a long lengthy debate and actually some very good things were said during that debate that were not implemented in the final motion and decision. And we recognized it and I want to explain the, the, the event that occurred. First of all, for Newell, this doesn't allow them to put their sign back up, so you'll be happy. You know, this is just relating to the easements directly. So as it relates to this, what we realized when they came in on Monday is the way the town council approved the trail, the horse trail into their community. There was no definition of where that horse trail actually came in. There was no entrance feature or something showing that this is where horses were to go. They didn't have a fence. They had their carport, that was it, you know, where you entered their community. And a trail rider was supposed to know, you, you walk around somewhere and enter the community, you have to make a left, an immediate left down an incredibly narrow area and then go behind four houses and, and go to a road to, to really nowhere, because it, it didn't connect to anywhere. That coupled with the fact that they sold one of the homes and lots in the community, that coupled with the fact that the HOA documents had some major issues in it that we had to resolve, enabled us to have a meeting with their team and their legal counsel on Monday to see how we could try to make this. Monday to see how we could try to make this better for our community and in turn better for, for their community if they would agree. As a result of the meeting, they came up with a new plan, and I just want to be able to explain it to everyone. And, and this is actually a good representation, then I'll explain it for them. So what they have agreed to do with the council consent is rather than coming into the community...
Can I have the handheld first, like Russell?
No, just a hand, oh. Yeah. Sorry. Is this a pointer? Okay. It's all right. Rather than coming into the community off of Griffin Road and making an immediate left down a, a very precarious area that was not wide at all, and then hitting the trail behind these four homes, that Akai would agree to give the residents a 10-foot wide equestrian trail where you could ride two by two through a dedicated access point, go down this 10-foot trail, go straight down around their lake area, this is 184th, future 184th, and I'll get there in a second, and, and meander through the back of the community. By doing this, they have agreed to do a couple of things. One, they will put an entrance feature at this location, which we'll see in one second, that show riders where the trail is located. The riders will then be shown signs along the way showing them where the trail is, it goes. They will put another entrance feature for riders at this location so that when 184th is eventually developed, trail riders will know this is the access point that they can go into to get back through the community. They also agreed to put an entrance feature on 49th at this location, also signaling to riders where they could go. At the, at the location by Griffin Road, they've agreed to put a mount so that if a horseback rider got off their horse for any reason as they cross Griffin Road or otherwise, they could re-get on the horse at that location or off the horse at that location as they cross Griffin Road. All of this would be fully signed, left open, and significant width to enable horses to walk two by two through the community. As riders leave the community, there will be additional signage that they've agreed to place. Signage that will indicate specifically that horse crossing must occur at the Bonaventure Bridge. In addition to that, they will place another sign near the Bonaventure Bridge showing horse crossing, and I know this is a big issue that you're all working with Weston on right now, they've agreed to place proper signage showing that you'll cross the Bonaventure Bridge at that location. Russell, if you could go to the next picture? I think this is still showing the, the connectivity, there's just a cut sheet. Keep going. That's a cut sheet again. Keep going. Okay, right here. This shows exactly sort of like what Landmark has, the layout of the equestrian fence and entrance, it will be labeled for equestrian entrance, very much like Landmark, cannot spook the horse, it's the width for one horse, prevents a, a vehicle or, or an ATV to go through, but a horse can go through without being spooked because of the width. The same entrance feature will be placed at those other two locations as well, which would be 184th and 49th Street. The one thing to note here is on the original plan that the council approved last time, none of this existed at all. There was no location for the, the residents to go in on trail, there was no equestrian entrance, it was almost like you'd have to know it was there in order to get there. So by doing this and adding these three entrance features and having a wide trail where you can go two by two down the road to get to the other major horse trails in the town, we actually think that they've agreed and, and through the council's direction, you know, to, to make this happen, has agreed to make a very, very nice trail. And, and to put into context, the vice mayor actually brought up this plan as part of the discussion when it originally occurred, but without having the engineers and architects drawing it in before you at that long meeting, it couldn't be determined. And council member Hartman, post the meeting, called me and Andy and spoke about the signage issues, to have the signage to Bonaventure and to make sure that there was proper signage in and out of the community. As a result of this, the, the developer also agreed to amend their HOA documents significantly, giving up certain architectural control elements, agreeing to timeframes for construction and otherwise. And as, you know, we progress, we believe that it incorporates all of the things that the council desired during that meeting, but didn't really fulfill by trying to make that immediate left because of the narrowness. And, and Russell, if you could go back to that first slide again so that everyone can see it. And you can see originally you all, I wish you could zoom in, it was very narrow access point to get back here. You know, it was basically one horse, you know, wide, well, I don't know what just happened, to get back there. So when we looked at it and looked at the improvements and everything else that was in this area, and the fencing and everything else, it made much more sense to give a two by two trail the entire width of the road to go the entire way, including the 184th axis, the 49th and the axis on Griffin Road. So Andy, I, I think I described what we did as much as possible. Alex and, and his partner is here. If you have any questions, you know, I, I would ask that, that motion that was made actually be withdrawn because I, I, you know, I would hope that the council will agree that the, the additions of all these other new improvements that we met with them on makes for a better trail with the signage and everything else. But I'm sure they're here to answer any questions. Andy, did I miss anything?
I've got, I, I think, I think you let it out perfectly clearly. I have nothing further to add. And I, I know that the Akai Estates representatives are here. You've certainly heard from Keith very clearly what it is. I know they're here if you have any questions for them.
Okay. We do have a motion and a second on the table. So does this, this is different than what is in the...
Slightly, yes. Because what, what I just presented, which is what they're, they're going to stipulate to, you know, if you all want to accept this offer, moves that trail easement to the front of 1, 2, 3, and 4. And adds all those, that signage and everything else that I've mentioned on the record. So the council does have a choice. You can go with the second reading exactly as you had the first time, which would make that immediate left.
Here's, here's my concern. I mean, I, I disagree with the extremely narrow. I think we made sure that there was going to be space there. But here's, 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 here's my concern is I'm, I'm concerned about the safety of the trail riders. That's my concern. And I want to keep them off of Griffin Road as much as I can, right? And so having that exit right at where the crossing is, I believe, is a much safer alternative than having them come out and having them to turn and, and go, go down Griffin and get to the point where they cross over, cross over Griffin onto Bonaventure, which there is a nice trail on the other side of the canal. So, so the, 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 is this a permanent change or is this a temporary change? I guess is my first question. This is going to be permanent? This is the way it's going to be?
Permanent, but you bring something up that I'm going to throw it out again without them killing me and without you all killing me because I'm just brainstorming right now. If, you're, you're talking about having the entrance lined up over here.
Right.
Okay. Alex, without killing me, i-if the council wants to go that route, could a horse come in and is there 10 feet wide here to do the connection straight up at that location? Because then, Mayor, that would accomplish what you want and accomplish what they're looking for.
It's much safer.
Much safer.
So the question is just shift your equestrian entrance down to right over where the property edge is, I don't know where it is, and just have that, that trail line up straight down here and go up and around and then it's the same thing.
So I wasn't sworn in or anything?
It's not quasi judicial.
Okay. So I mean, we have our, on the 45-degree angle there, we have our landscaping, our, there's a whole feature in there that embellishes that corner there. Between that arrow where Keith pointed out, there's two drainage swales that basically can bring water from the entrance down towards the canal and back to the dry retention area. And it's, then there's vegetation on the berm, there's a proximity of the berm, so it's not really the best location to actually place it.
But can you make it happen?
Eh, most likely not. I mean, it's, it's...
That's not the answer. That's not the answer.
Really, no. I mean, there's, to, to make it happen is we'll have to basically...
All, all you're doing is cutting a, a hole in that landscaping to allow a entrance feature.
There's not enough room in there unless we can move the landscaping further to the right there, there's no really room to do it that way.
Further to the right.
Is that difficult? To move the landscaping?
And you have the berm right there, too.
Right, right. I thought that was the berm.
Right.
Right.
Where the blue arrow is on the, yeah, it's, it's the blue...
The blue arrow is where the sidewalk is.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, and that's what I'm afraid of.
Yeah. And the berm is to the left of it. Keep, a little bit to the left, there you go. The berm goes from here to that center line that you have on the right. There you go. That's the center line of the berm.
Right. So the question is, is there a location in this area that's closer to the, the bridge that you could put that equestrian entrance?
There's no room in there. The property line goes all the way to the edge of the berm there, of that lot, number one. Back to the same issue of having all that trail going through the back of the lots.
No, it wouldn't go to the back of the lot. They're looking to put it as close to the Bonaventure Bridge as possible to go up the side of Lot 1 and then cut over. They're not looking to, to do what you're worried about, which is going behind Lot 1, 2, and 3.
Are you saying, so leave the trail where it's at and then go this way?
Correct.
Okay?
That's all they're looking to do.
There's got to be a safe way for the horses to traverse there.
That could, that could be fine, I think.
That's what I'm saying.
That's what I understand, okay.
That can be, or is it fine?
We have enough room there? Right. I mean, civil wise, I mean, if we have, civil wise, if we're okay, I mean, it's...
And council, just so I know, if we make this happen, because this would have to be after the fact, if this is your, your vote, if this only ends up being wide enough for one horse or five feet wide in just that area, will that be okay? If he can't get the full 10 feet there? It all depends what the berm is and everything else.
Five feet is pretty narrow.
It is narrow. Who's, I'm sorry, Alex, who's your person back here? You're the engineer, do you know what, how much width we could get back there?
If we haven't come up to the microphone.
If you can come up to the mic, only because you're being recorded and they can't hear you.
If you flip to the, one more, yeah. If you look there, you should be able to see the width, but you see that there's, there's basically two swales and a berm. The swale on the, on the left side is the one for serving Lot 1 that conveys the water to the retention area, and then you got a swale to the right that is the one that goes out all the way to the canal. So you should have enough space just to ride along that swale.
That says 13-foot road easement, 12-foot road easement?
No, 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 I'm talking about the swale to the right.
Over here?
No, no, that's a berm. Okay, so between the berm and the, and the swale to the left, there's another swale that the horse could ride on.
Right up against Griffin. I just can't see it. Do you know, do you know the width of this?
12 feet is...
Good, then you have what you need.
I would say it needs to be a minimum of 10 feet. So if we can do 10 feet there, then, then we're good.
Okay. So, so Mayor, just because I'm going to have to write this up.
It works for me.
That works for you, to put the, the equestrian entrance at this location by, am I going to have to write location anymore? And then straight up the swale connecting to the trail that they've already proposed.
Yeah. It works. I'm, I'm fine.
God, great. I wish you were at our meeting Monday.
Good. Good. So I think we need to withdraw the motion that we had. Thank you.
Withdraw the second.
Thank you. And want to give us some, some verbiage here? You want to, you want to go for it, Gary?
Sure.
Go for it, man.
I'll make a motion that whatever he just said works.
I'll second that.
I'll make a motion that we modify the front entrance to accommodate the horse trail from Akai Drive to the corner of, to the intersection of Bonaventure Boulevard and Griffin Road with a minimum 10-foot trail easement that you need. And with all the accompanying features at the different sites, the 49th Street, the 184th, and then the Griffin Road, that they'll all be incorporated into the master plan.
I'll second that.
And the sign, and all the proper signage.
I'll sign it, right. I think I got it all.
Perpetual maintenance.
Huh?
Perpetual maintenance?
Yeah, they're, they're maintaining it.
And we also said we will work with staff for the correct placement of the signs and how you guys want to direct things, so we'll make it happen.
Thank you.
All right. We get a second on that?
Yeah.
We did? Okay. Any further comments on this from the council? Seeing none, any public comment on this? Yeah, Newell?
Do we move or do we stay together?
Newell Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. Seeing that Akai is already a bad actor because of the signage they put up and when cited, they waited until just before they had to go to magistrate to remove it, which was almost 60 days. Any excuse that they had is irrelevant. If there's anything, anything that has to be, has to be in writing at this time and everything in the future has to be in writing. If this is going to cover the homeowner's documents in any way, make sure that you delay until the documents are done. Anything that you're going to do, because they are a bad actor, even though they can explain it away any way they want, I'm looking at the bottom line, which is 60 days almost they left their signage up, which was illegal. They're allowed one four-by-eight sign to put up on that development. So, being a bad actor, make sure everything is in writing, all the Ts are crossed, all the Is are dotted, and do not accept any verbiage they want to give you because we've been burned by Cessna and then earlier we were burned by Landmark from verbiage. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further public comment, public comment closed. If we can please call the roll on it. Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonski?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Gentlemen, before you leave, I just want to say one other thing. The, the revised rendering that the council approved that you've stipulated to will be an attachment to the exhibit to the revised ordinance that we're going to do. So if the engineer can please put that together as quickly as possible and delineate where those entrance feature signs are going to be, and, and then put a note on the plan stating that additional trail signage will be provided based on, you know, the desires of staff or however you want to write it, and that will be incorporated as Newell Hollingsworth said directly in the ordinance and will be attached. So if you could get that to us, we'll get it done.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, I want to thank you and staff as well, too. It's been a long journey for us. The county is waiting for us, for us to get started with our entrance, so if you can actually expedite the process of having that resolution signed over to the county so we can finally get started. It's been 80 years since we acquired this property. It's been a long way. Mayor, you mentioned before you don't like to go backwards. We have gone backwards and made changes and concessions for the good of the community and for the town of Southwest Ranches and for our community. And we continue to work with you guys on making things happen. I don't want one mistake to basically leave a bad taste in anybody's. I mean, we were not...
of Southwest Ranches and for our community, and we continue to work with you guys, uh, on making things happen. I don't want one mistake to basically leave a bad taste in anybody's, I mean, this, we were not aware, we have our reasons, medical, personal reasons, there's other things in there, but we wanna continue to work with the town and, and make it good and, uh, what we're supposed to, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, in wrapping comments, thank you for your leadership on this. Because if we remember at the very beginning, there was no horse trail, there were no horse areas in this, and through the action of yourself and the council, we got this changed. Good work.
Yeah, thank you. I think this will be a good, a good resolution for the town, yourself.
You, you use as an example that actually, actually went backwards and worked with you guys...
Yeah.
Rather than basically, uh, us being portrayed as the bad guys, so, let's work together and make this happen.
Excellent.
Thank you, guys.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you. All right, um, item number 13.
Mayor, this is the companion item from the LPA, so we're looking for a tabling on this particular...
Motion to table to...
Do you need me to read the title first, or? We need to read the title, don't we, Keith?
Motion to table for April 14th, right?
Correct.
Correct, yep. Okay.
Sorry, Mayor, we just have to read into the record.
Sorry.
So, this is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, Article 10, entitled Definition of Terms, to revise the definition of the term net acre to exclude certain surface water management areas and drainage easements, amending Article 45, entitled Agricultural and Rural Districts, Section 045-070, Minimum Plot Size and Dimensions to Provide For Lots Made Non-Conforming By This Ordinance, Providing For Codification, Providing For Conflict, Providing For Severability, Providing For An Effective Date.
Thank you.
You got a motion, you need a second?
I think, yeah, we've, we've got a motion and a second, right? I think we've been there.
I'm sorry, who, okay.
It's a motion to table, April 14th...
Correct.
2022?
Yes.
The, the agenda says 2024. 2022 at 7:00 PM. Okay?
Noel, I'm surprised you didn't...
Good thing they went outdoor.
That's why I just wanted to...
All right. All right, I think we're good. I think we're good.
10 years.
Call the roll.
Yeah, we'll keep it in the same year.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
All right, item number 14.
Sure, uh, Mayor, I'm gonna be quick on this item, and it, just really looking for authorization, uh, Noel properly pointed out to me a couple of meetings ago that the prison still remains on the CCA site in, in, in multiple different manners. What this, uh, discussion item would allow us to do is go directly to Broward County and have them amend the plat note, our, currently, our, our town says that that's slated for a 2,500-bed, um, uh, correctional institution, we would remove that and, and change it to industrial, uh, to avoid the prison going there, um, and so, we're just looking for authorization to submit that request to Broward County to make the change, and, and that's why it's on the agenda.
That's great.
You need a motion on it?
Yeah.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, any discussion on this item?
After all the hard work, Keith, you sure you wanna go there?
I, I like my chances with the current proposal.
I agree.
Any public comment on this? Seeing none, I think this is awesome that this is going away, so...
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Longer the prison cycle.
Yeah, Russell, please.
Gotta come up with a name for it now.
Yeah, we need a contest.
By the way, before you call a roll in, in, someone jumps in with the motion to adjourn, uh, I, I just wanna mention, at the meeting, it was actually discussed, and they liked the name Ranches Industrial Park.
All right.
Rip.
I like it.
I think that's what I've been calling it on my flyovers.
I like it. All right.
All right, Councilmember Albritton?